I didn't hear anything.
I'd like to call this meeting in order. Roll call, please, Ms. Stevens.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Here.
Mr. Canwisher. Mrs. Kunkel. Mrs. Rivera.
Here.
Dr. Wugley.
Here. Please rise and join me in the presence of the Senate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Welcome, Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I will need two different motions today because we have two separate items for closed session. I'll take the first one.
I move the board to hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51(c) of the open meetings law to discuss strategy with counsel in matters that are presently in litigation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51(c) of the open meetings law to discuss strategy with counsel in matters that are presently in litigation. Roll call, vote please, Ms. Stevens.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher. I'm sorry. Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. And I'll take the second closed session item.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51(a) of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session.
Second. Motion by Ms. Rivera, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51(a) of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session. Roll call, vote please, Ms. Stevens.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay. Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. If you would like to address the board, you can come up to the podium, state your name and your capacity within the district, and then you will be allowed three minutes to address the board. And since this is a non-- since this is an open meeting and this is a non-agenda item, we will not be able to comment on it, but we certainly do hear you. And then if you want to come up and what-- depending on what you say, we would like you to try and maintain as much confidentiality as possible for the people involved. Anybody who would like to come up to address the board?
Hello, my name's Kelly Smith, and this last Friday I received an email and learned that this week, or last Friday, there was in fact another incident prior to the writing in blood where my daughter's name showed up in the bathroom. So now this photo right here is the first incident, which we were told was after the writing in blood. This photo specifically was shown to my husband, and I want to read you what the police report says. Just a snippet of it, I'm not reading the whole thing. "On April 24th," which I've already told you is the wrong date, "at approximately 12:37, possibly related graffiti again appeared in the girl's bathroom stall." The name Annalise was written on the wall with "Hi, hey, hello, hola" written on the same wall and dry erase marker. And then it goes on to say this. But I'm told that this happened prior to this. So I am again left confused because this does not make sense to me. I'm also told that we don't have a photo of the third incident because we weren't originally told about this. And if this was just random graffiti, I can understand not being told about this initially. But after there is a threat with your child's name written in blood, I can't understand not being told about this. Because according to the custodian's notes that I found in the email from my FOIA request, it would have only been eight days that had gone by. So at that time, I would think that the district would still have that security footage that we could have been proactive and gone back to that footage and started watching the video of who had been in the restroom. And I also talked, I emailed you guys, so you know that I've talked to administration, and they had told me at the last board meeting that there had only been two times. So we now have another incident where people at the junior high don't know what is going on. Because if you remember, when my daughter's name was written in blood, nobody from the school contacted me, and they didn't know when I called them at three o'clock that this incident had happened, and it happened prior, in the morning, nine o'clock, nine fifteen in the morning. What is going on? I also, I don't know how, we don't have a picture of the third incident after there's a clear threat, but we have pictures of random graffiti that were just cleaning off the bathroom wall. Can somebody explain that to me, please? I also, um... Sorry, I lost my place in my notes. I get talking, and I really just wanted to try to stick with certain facts tonight. How long does the district keep security footage for? I would like to know that. I think that's a fair question to know because, like I said, this, the blood incident would have only been eight days according to what's in the janitor's email of this first incident. Thank you.
Can you turn around and show us the picture?
Yeah. So the police report says "hi, hey, hello, hola, Annalise," all on the same wall. That we are told that.
Is there anybody else who wants to address the board on a non-agenda item? Moving on to board members. Ms. Brockman.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Rivera?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Kunkel?
I wanted to say congratulations to Maura Peters and Ethan Bloomey. There was a golf, state golf tournament, a pretty prestigious and big one for youth in the state of Iowa, and across, you know, golfers from all over the state, and the two top golfers for both female and male PV students. So I thought that was a quite accomplishment for them.
Ms. Hoskins.
Nothing.
Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Canyon?
I have nothing.
Mr. Zimmer?
I have nothing.
Okay. Ms. Stevens?
There is an updated personnel agenda in your packet.
Thank you.
Oh wait, do you have one more thing? Beginning of June, one of our former faculty members passed away. She taught her entire career at Pleasant View. Her name was Sue Witty. Actually, hadn't, in elementary school. She was, as I said, she taught her entire career at Pleasant View Elementary, which spanned over thirty years. I'd like to share that the condolences are being paid with my...
Can you say a little louder the name of the person who?
Her name was Sue Witty.
Sue Witty, teacher at Pleasant View Elementary for over thirty years, passed away earlier this month in June. Recognizing siblings to her and her family.
Ms. Schuss?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, wonderful. So we're going to move on. There's no recognition today, so we are going to move on to the rest of the agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $658,2122 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $531.19 in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Elementary-Junior High Activity Fund.
I move the elementary-Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $3,708.07 in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Mr. Ayers, that the elementary-Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. High School Activity Fund.
I move that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $36,284.60 in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, Management Fund.
I move the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued...
You actually, Management Fund?
Oh. I mean differently. I move Management Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $283 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Rivera, that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Capital Projects Fund.
I move that Capital Project Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $806,951.82 in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the High School, or that the, um... High School Activity Fund warrants be issued. Doesn't make sense. Hold on, yeah, that's right. Okay, that the Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Pebble Fund.
I move that Pebble Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $61,101.92 in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Debt Fund.
I move the Debt Service Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $3,846,102... $846,102. There we go, in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Brockman, that the Debt Service Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Student Construction Fund.
I move that Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $16.05 in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera, that the Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Internal Service Fund.
I move that Internal Service Fund warrant, $6520 to $6523, be issued in the total amount of $39,436.99 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the Internal Services Fund warrant, $6520 to $6523, be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And Trust Fund.
I move that Trust Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $1,429.56 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera, that the Trust Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, moving on to new, there's no old business, so moving on to new business. We have the elementary-Junior High, the elementary-Junior High and High School handbooks. I guess, Mr. Zimmer, you're going to start with that?
Yeah, I will just start introducing. We'll go with the elementary-Junior High and High School. So Liz Bornhof, I've been at the Riverdale Heights, we'll start with the elementary, and then she'll be...
Good evening. We just have two proposed changes in the line of attendance and absences. So you will note listed here, the first item is under the extended trips or prearranged section pages nine and ten of the elementary handbook. As we reviewed this administratively and talked through it, reflected upon the policy, and then how we engage in that practice with following up with families, we felt that there was some inconsistency in the language as it currently read within that paragraph where we strongly discourage those trips during the educational time as students really need to be in school as much as possible. That learning cannot be replicated. Even with Google Classroom, there's flexibility, there's the nimbleness, there's that, you know, response to teaching that we engage with students on a daily basis. And therefore, as we read through the paragraph, we felt that, or we would propose, that we would strike the excused portion of that language. So I have for you the way it is written currently. The proposal in that header would be, again, to remove the excused and just title it Arranged Absences. So that's the first one. I don't know if you want me to go through both and then ask for questions, or if you'd like me to stop that point or this point.
Why don't you go through both and then...
Okay. The second one, again, is under the absence category. It basically, again, strikes the excused, or excuse me, the unexcused portion. And there is a change proposal with regard to listing unexcused absences. It is still important to provide families with some guidance in terms of what we would consider to be an excused absence. However, again, being consistent with our policy and our practice and being equitable, we felt that it did not need to be in there, that we are listing unexcused absences. So we listed the change there, and then also have the language that ultimately excused and unexcused absences will be determined, excuse me, by the building administrators. So just those two proposals for tonight.
Are there any questions from the board? So in other words, you're basically giving examples of excused absences, but not really examples of unexcused absences.
Correct.
Any questions at all? Okay.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Hi, how are y'all?
How are you?
Great. So we have at the junior high two similar changes to our, or suggested changes to our handbook as well. The first thing is we'd also like to strike the excuse from that, the prearranged trips. And then we're also like to take it, all work is to be made up before the trip because of consistency and, you know, teachers, when they are planning lessons and things like that, sometimes those lessons change, and so the work that would be done prearranged would not necessarily align with what was done at the end. So we would like to strike that. And then in the excessive absences section, we would like to strike that first paragraph that we have there and replace it with the other paragraph that you see there. And that is just to be more consistent and fair across the board in the way that we are handling these excessive absences, and then adding that ten consecutive days. And that is a part of the state mandates with our absences tracking and things like that. Have any questions with that?
A little background real quick on the six, nine, fifteen. Remember, we have our state, our absence is when someone's gone for six days, nine days, or fifteen days. We send a letter home saying that student's been gone cumulative days. Fifteen, if they've been gone more than fifteen, we typically will bring in a school resource officer, be part of that planning session, what that can look like. So that's kind of the excessive absence piece on top. And then the ten consecutive days would be if a student is leaving for over ten consecutive days. For example, might be leaving the country for an extended period of time. We do unenroll them, and then when they come back, we re-enroll them into the district at that time. So that's where that ten-day unenroll piece would come into play.
I just have one question on, I don't know if it's in this part, but maybe... How did tardiness relate to absences? Is there tardy so many days, does that count as a full day of absence?
Yeah, three days tardy would equal one day of an absence.
Is that somewhere else in the handbook?
Is it somewhere else? Yeah, that's somewhere else. That's in the tardy section.
I'm sure there's some ignorance aware of that, as it is.
So right now, you're not, the striking of that sentence means that the student and the teacher have to decide when that work is due then. It doesn't have to be before they leave, but it depends on how they're progressing in the class.
Right, they would collaborate with the teacher to see when those assignments are due.
So you don't want to put anything in there saying work needs to be completed, but will be done in collaboration with the teacher? See if that's there. It was stricken from the first, but I don't see...
Right, we don't have...
I haven't seen anything that says all work is to be made up based on like the student and teacher mutually agreeing on a due date. It's not saying anything like that. Do you think that we should put that in there so that they know that they have to make up the work?
So, not speaking for the junior high, because it is a different scenario, but for the elementary, because we are standards-based, that doesn't necessarily apply anymore. Yes, there is required work and activities and tasks that we ask students to engage in, but because we are working through, reaching a standard throughout a term or multiple terms, there isn't necessarily a you must do all of these things in order to ensure a grade or a percentage, like maybe you would in a junior high or high school. So we did discuss that at the elementary level, but that isn't always applicable given the way teachers are providing instruction to meet a standard or a portion of a standard throughout a term. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
Junior high?
Yeah, we are moving towards standard space. We are not there yet. So we would need to probably put something like that in there.
I would think so, because I don't want it to be, it says, well, it doesn't say we have to make up the work. But if you have it there, then it's...
Yeah, it does, it's got to be done. Absolutely.
Just saying there about students and teachers preparing as much in advance as possible for learning accommodations, is that the last sentence, right? So I think that does account a little bit for that, but maybe clarify.
Yeah, I think you might need a little clarification there. Tony coming in.
So will you clarify that and bring it back?
We can just...
Or...
Or we can make that change and clarify.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds great.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to go to the high school, and then we'll get to your question.
Maybe high school portion mirrors the front end about excused absences. There are some differences, however. High school has requested to keep the unexcused examples in. They have proved to be extremely helpful in defining the excuse called in. And a lot of the examples given on there were secondary targeted. So that was that portion of it. Also, the high school does not follow the ten-day consecutive days. And there's one big reason, it's called credit. Students at that level are in credit. So there is the opportunity for the student to continue doing the work, whether it be online or whatever, to provide that. If it gets to fifteen days, that's a whole different, that's a whole different sequence. Because now you've missed three consecutive weeks. And at that point in time, the conversation is about moving out of a in-person into an online option so that you can continue to progress and earn credit at the same time through edgenuity. So that's why there is a difference there. The other portion that is a follow-up is dealing with search and seizure. And under the search and seizure policy, the section underlined says, "In the event of vape or THC detection by school HALO devices, all students in the vicinity can be brought in and questioned. All are subject to search. Search may include the use of metal detection wand. Even if the device is not recovered, a student may be suspended if in the vicinity of vape detection in combination with the detection by the wand. If a vape slash THC device is recovered, the student may be cited, referred to general diversion program, and/or recommended for community service." So the section here that is different is the use of the wand. And that was a pilot this year. And as you may recall, last year, when the high school reported the vape detection and usage in the high school was going off the charts. The introduction of the HALO devices curbed that, as you recall from the last board meeting presentation, curbed that dramatically. And the use of the wand helped accelerate the investigation portion of a group of people that might be in there, some that had nothing to do with it, and others that were absolutely using vape devices. So that is the change recommendation in high school.
Questions from Mr. Zimmer?
I'm confused by the sentence, even if a device is not recovered, a student may be suspended if in the vicinity of vape detection in combination with the detection by the wand. I'm just confused with, so if they're in the vicinity of, so I assume if they're around the bathroom and the HALO device detects it, they still can be suspended. Well, is the detection wand just detect devices, or does it detect other things that would help?
Well, on the wand here, that's the important thing to notice, the difference between law enforcement and school officials. And that key word is reasonable and preponderance. So school officials do not have to have a preponderance of evidence to act on. They have to have a reasonable amount of evidence to act on. The wand is kind of that backup or second. So the HALO goes off, and you've got a group of students, and it was like, okay, that's at least cause for suspicion. That takes you to the next level of at least a search, and what the search would uncover. And if the search, if the wand comes across and it's going off beep, 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 as they're winding it over, and other people, you get nothing, that's giving you a second level of, okay, now we're, we have a higher reasonable suspicion that, yes, you have it. At that point in time, I would say a vast majority of students say, yeah, you're right, and they will hand it over. Some may not. Some may be consistent, say, nope, I don't have it, I don't have it. Everything that's on there...
Even though the wand's going off saying it's on there.
Even though the wand's going off saying it's there, and then we just stop and say, you know what? Yep, we might not have it, but we are going to move because we have a reasonable amount of suspicion to act.
Makes sense then. And then are you going to edit similar to the junior high with how it was directed about the work, the school work?
Yes. Yes, we can. We'll use similar language at that same sentence for both.
I don't know if anyone here would know the answer to this, but where it says...
I don't know if anyone here would know the answer to this, but where it says if you're gonna be gone for an extended period, you have to have a written note. Is that different than just a day absence? I mean, do you guys, I mean, do we actually follow that note? And the only reason I ask is I sent a note with my daughter. She's at the high school. She was gonna be gone for something. It was an extended absence, but. She called me and said, no, they don't, they don't want a note. They want you to call. So is there differences between a day absence versus an extended absence or do they always prefer a note? Or that, maybe that's just something we need to communicate with our the secretaries, you know, maybe consistent on what we want the parents to do.
I agree. I had the same situation. I think it needs to be communicated better because I, it's easy for me to write an email.
Yeah.
But that's not acceptable. I was told I had to call as well. And even just leave a message is fine, but um at the high school level, you have to call in and I was not aware of that.
In terms of the ten days, we typically have parents will meet during the call or they'll. Send a letter saying we're gonna be gone for X number of days. So a lot of times that's what you would see at the elementary and junior high level.
So the extended absences, yeah. So do we have another part in our handbook that has just, you know, normal doctor's appointments, that kind of stuff, how we handle that communication? I don't know if we necessarily need it, but.
It is in there.
It is.
I don't have it. It's it's within pages nine and ten. I apologize. I don't have the whole thing with me. Um, but it does, uh at least at the elementary, give an example of uh if your student is planning to be absent or for sick or whatever reason. Here are the steps to follow. At least at the elementary, I believe that it is written, please don't quote me, but I I think. Um, that it says that it is a phone call and then you would leave your child's name. It has a a bulletin list, reason for absence, so on and so forth. Um, steps that way. I believe, you know, at least at the elementary, an email to the administrative secretaries or myself. Or the the principal would be fine as well, as long as there was some way of communication, but I believe in the handbook, it does stay state to give a phone call.
And you just remember sometimes a phone call works better because if someone doesn't read their email right away in the morning, you know, looking from attendance standpoint, making sure they're tracking them, we would have that.
Yes, and like at the junior high, it's the opposite. I tried calling and I had to submit a letter. So that might just be another thing of making it consistent across all schools. Um, so, you know, to avoid that confusion. They say without a letter, I have to get out of my car and go into the school and actually get my student.
Any other questions? So um if not, we could probably take a motion with the um to put the amendments that we've talked about.
Yeah, we can make that one sentence adjustment there. And then we'll also go through and just at the start of the year, we'll go through protocol as well with our staff.
That's great. I'll take a motion then.
I would like the board approve updates to elementary, junior high and high school student parent handbooks as presented. Second?
Uh motion of Miss Conkle second by Ms. Rivera that the board approve updates for the elementary, junior high and high school student parent handbooks as presented and after the amendments we discussed about today. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
I just got a question about the junior high handbook. I know Mr. Struce and I had talked about this when we had a meeting. Is um I, so in the handbook, it says um, you know, bullying and harassment of students and other students will not be tolerated in the school or school district. And um a threat of a fellow student is level one, two, three or four. But uh the threat of a faculty member starts at a level two. Why is a threat to a student less? And why is that not being changed?
I think when you look at that, when you look at level one, level two, part of why the level two of the staff is because number one, if a student is making a threat to a a faculty member. It's probably starting at a higher level already. Sometimes when you look at a a level of harassment, bullying at a level one, it may not be considered bullying, harassment, it may more of a conflict. And with students, it can look at differently. And that is why we have that starting at a level one, but it can jump to a level two. It's not a progressive process. I think that's why we look at that as being a level one, level two. It could be level one to four right away for a student, depending upon the level of what's being said or what's being done.
Yes.
I also have a question. Um, let's see, for junior high, you put your child into a bus, gets on, makes it to school, but not in the class. How is me as a parent gonna find out, well, he didn't go to class, I love the bus to go to school. Do you have a procedure for somebody to call and say, hey, your child's going to school, what happened?
Miss Dix, what time of day do you call if a student's not in the classroom?
This third period, so it's around nine.
Yeah, it's around nine o'clock is they'll do attendance, first period, check and see. And then they will follow up to see if there's a, if they're not there, they will call home from the office.
If you have infinite campus, the parent portal.
I do, but let's say that's not available.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, so.
You can't stay without your hand in charge. Oh, he didn't, oh, he didn't, oh, no, he didn't make it this class. Just as of, hey, so when is the parent, when are you gonna be there? Hey, your child is not in school, does something happen?
It's at the nine o'clock, around nine o'clock, that third period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um we'll continue with the um, so the motion with Ms. Conkle, the second, but was with um. Ms. Rivera?
Ms. Rivera.
That the board approved the updates to the elementary, junior high and high and high school student parent handbooks as presented with the amendments that we talked about. Please, Ms. Damon?
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, moving on to another new business item, twenty twenty three, um through twenty twenty six Durham School Services Agreement, Mr. Struce.
So this evening, we have our new contract. We're looking at a three-year contract with Durham Transportation Services. Remember this, last year we did a one-year standing contract with them to make sure that they were meeting our benchmarks and our expectations moving forward. Uh, a lot of that had to do with uh staffing and having enough bus routes. Um, so this past year, we have met on a, every two weeks, we've met with Durham to go through our expectations, make sure we're moving forward. Before we were gonna bring a three-year contract back with the with the company. So just to report for you, at this time last year, we had twenty-eight bus routes, which we felt was still a little bit low. At this time today, we currently have thirty-five bus drivers signed up for next year. And we have ten casual drivers signed up for next year and we're looking at adding three routes. So we'll have thirty-one routes next year. We'll be adding, our plan right now is Dakota, Forest Grove and Riverdale Heights are the three tightest areas. But because of what we've been able to accomplish here this last year and moving forward, we feel confident. We will move forward with the three-year contract, which has been our past practices um prior to this last one-year deal. When you look at the contract, a couple of things I would share with you. Year one will be a six percent increase and then the following two years, year two and year three will be a three and a half percent increase. So those prices are set moving forward. The one change I'll let you know right now, typically we keep our fleet at a minimum age of twelve. We are gonna add it to thirteen for next year only and I'll explain why. Um, we are looking at um eighty-two passenger buses is what we tend to like to have in our fleet as much as possible. Waterloo is closing their um station down um up and and so some of the buses that they have will be bringing to us. But with that said, we want to make sure that they meet our expectations from a safety standpoint. And they're not lowering what we've been trying to get to the point of where our inspections are very good. So I said to them, I said, I'm willing to take keep our fleet for another year if we feel the Waterloo buses aren't meeting our expectations. So we'll keep it at thirteen next year. Our focus of our bi-weekly meetings next year will be continued on staffing. And the second one will be on the age of our fleet and the condition of our fleet. Um, if you talk to the guy who does the inspections for the state, he says where we were four years ago, where we are today has drastically increased. Uh, but we can still get better. Not saying we have arrived where we want to be yet, but we're sitting in a much better place than where we have been the last few years. One, due to um the pandemic timeframe and busing, what that looked like and and staffing. And I think the increase we gave in raises last year to the busing company helped us get to this point where we now have thirty-five drivers for next year. So that's exciting. So the agreement is for be for a three-year and we always have the ability to opt out of the clause with a ninety-day notice. That is in our contract. So should something change? There is an out clause, yes.
Ninety days and there's no hangout of the contract or anything like that?
No, they would have to pay us a hundred thousand dollars. Now, the biggest thing if we opt out is number one, where's your fleet gonna come from? Can you buy that fleet from them? What does that look like? But we have to work through all that well ahead of time.
And in the in the three-year contract that we have, what is there a specific um increase per year that they're gonna be?
That's what we negotiate. So when we go with this six, three and a half, three and a half, that is set for the next three years. So we know those numbers so we can plan accordingly.
Did you find throughout this year that the um driver shortage had eased a bit? I mean, or is it still, I mean, we're good for next year, but are you still worried about that?
You know, I think, am I worried? I'll always be worried because you never know. But I feel much, I feel more confident today where we are than where we were sitting two, three years ago, where we'd be sitting at this time of the year going. Where are we gonna find drivers? How are we gonna promote it and what's it gonna look like? So I mean, they actually have other ones, I'll call it in the queue, so they're still going to. We could be above thirty-five at some point. I think it gets to a number where people are like, I'm not driving enough and then they're gonna quit. But having those ten casuals and then having four extra subs right now is good.
That incentive that we, was that from the district for to get drivers certified? Was that from them?
Came from Durham.
Did they find that that was successful?
Uh, not a great deal. Um, I just think number one, I think we picked up a few drivers from Davenport and we picked up a few from some other districts. Partially because of the increase in wages. And they're also looking at how do we help them get time over the summer from unemployment standpoint. So there's been some good movement there. I also believe that Stacy and Harley are now kind of starting to feel their way into that position and feeling comfortable. And they're out searching for people or words getting out and they're they're managing this well.
Why did Waterloo um use their contract?
They went with a different company. I don't know the details of that, but um just with the closing of their fleet up there.
Did you get any feedback regarding, um, there was an emphasis on increasing communication to parents and I believe in the app and stuff like that. Have you gotten feedback? Has that been a successful change and?
We have not moved forward that that app yet. Um, they are currently trying again to get it to run well. And I'd say we are not gonna put it on our buses until we feel it's gonna operate well. Last thing I wanna do is an app for a parent and it's not accurate. So um we have to work through that.
There was, it seems like there was more communication out there, at least through emails and messages, maybe just through our parent portal and things like that.
We try to keep it at that, you know, ten to fifteen minute running late that Harley is sending the message out out there. If Harley can't send it, then she would tell me or maybe contact Heather to send it out. Uh, we also had our secretaries at the buildings train that they could send it out if they needed to. So it was a way to say, how can more people be working through this? Where Harley or Stacy are swamped or one of them's driving and they can't get the message out.
And what's this, can you explain the excess rate per quarter hour? What that um means is that is if the bus is running late, then we get charged, we build extra?
Or some days we may have someone who will take one route, jump on another route and be driving longer. That that's a way for them to cover that. We pay them over what their normal rate would be, then we increase it by that on quarter hours.
Any questions? If not, I will take a motion. Oh, yes.
Are there any discussion about going to sell like thirty buses?
We have. We've also talked about propane is the other option as well, uh trying to make them cleaner. And the cost behind it is very expensive. And that's what has deterred us from moving that direction. Now Durham may decide to try one off and on, but um the changing of the buses are so expensive. Be a major overhaul with thirty-one buses.
Uh, take a motion?
I move the board accept the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six transportation contract between Durham School Services and Pleasant Valley Community School District as presented.
Second?
Well, from Ms. Hoskins, I got Ms. Brockman at the board accept the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six transportation contract between Durham School Services and the Pleasant Valley Community School District as presented. Please, Ms. Damon?
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the resolution for purchase of athletic protective equipment, Mr. Struce.
You've been on the board for a number of years. This is maybe a protocol we do every single year. Just to give you a little history behind this. The general fund used to be able to purchase or pay for uh sports. I'll take football, for example, protective equipment. And then there was legislation passed that had to be paid through your um sports activity account. But then they had a clause in there that allowed you to still transfer at the end of a year money from general fund back into your student activity account to pay for that. So the reason we do this every single year is it allows us to take this money from general fund, put it into the activity account. And then allows Deanne Kramer to purchase other things that maybe we can't pay for out of the general fund. So it's just simply a transfer and you have to have a motion to make this transfer possible. Um, so each year at this time, after after all the budgets have been set now, everything's been paid for this year, we do a one transfer at the end of the year. And that's what this is representing here tonight.
Somebody have any questions? We we do this every year, so. Now I'll take a motion.
And we have the board approve the transfer of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents from the general fund to the student activity fund. For the purchase of athletic protective equipment as specified in two thousand seventeen, House File five sixty-four.
Well, from Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Ears, that the board approved the transfer of twenty three, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. From the general fund to the student activity fund for the purchase of athletic protective equipment as specified in twenty seventeen, House File five six four. Please, Ms. Damon.
Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes.
And now I'm moving on to the Iowa Association of School Boards' open and closed session training. Uh, Siobhan Schneider and Tammy Draba are here, IASB.
So Tammy and Siobhan are gonna walk us through today, a training session on open and closed um records laws in Iowa. And going back, this goes back to, the reason we're doing this is back on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. During our book reconsideration committee meeting, we had gone into closed session. And just as part of that, with Iowa Public Information Board, one of the things we've talked about doing was having this training here this evening. Just to remind us what that looks like and what our options are when it comes to open and closed sessions. And these two volunteered to come here this evening and to go through this training with us uh from the Iowa. School board side of it, um and what their practices are. And these two do trainings throughout the state. So they're very willing to come here tonight and walk us through this interactive session with the board tonight.
I think they have it up.
Sorry.
You guys have them?
Perfect.
I think.
Perfect. I was like super, super, super smart and did got all everything ready beforehand. So we should be good to go. Awesome. Well, I'm Tammy Draba. Uh, I live just to your south in Muscatine and work out of my uh office area. I am a director of board development and I spent about fifteen years in your seat, not here, obviously, in Muscatine. About half of that time in board leadership, uh and I always like to add during the pandemic. So you all know how challenging um that was. And I have uh your your work at the board table has an incredibly special place in my heart. Because it's not always easy work. And Brian told us we could have it as long as we were done before midnight, it was okay. No, we're kidding. We will not do that to you. But I'm gonna let Siobhan introduce herself and then we'll get to Roland.
Thanks, Tammy. And why we're not gonna do that to you is because I don't live around here. I'm from the Detroit metro. So I have a little bit of a, a little bit of windshield time yet um this evening. So I'm Siobhan Schneider. I'm an associate executive director at IASB of Board Leadership and Legal Services. So as Tammy mentioned, we love coming to meet with boards and to work with them and help guide them through training and education sessions. This particular type of training is a little bit unique in the sense that it's almost a hybrid because you're getting information from us. You have your packets and um we'll go through some of the interactive stuff. But it's really important to point out that this is based upon the Iowa Public Information Board's required um training for sunshine laws. Okay, so this is found on their website. Everybody has access to it. It is a really great um PowerPoint presentation. And I know um that you guys already have copies for yourselves um available. But um anyone can go onto IPB's website um and pull off this training. And so that's gonna be the basis of kind of where we're getting um our discussion tonight. So I'll probably pick a couple of slides as we're going along to really kind of highlight or drive home a concept as we're talking. as we're talking and we're discussing with one another. But this is truly designed to be an interactive session so that you guys can really sit and think about different concepts and ask questions of one another so that you can see, okay, you know, what does the law say on this? What is our understanding of that? So that we can kind of dig in. Does that make good sense? Excellent.
You, it won't be. You all are going to talk to each other and work together just a little bit. So, um, I'm going to, I'm going to kick us off with, um, on your packet, first of all, on the very, uh, front page is our contact information. Uh, and we are your service. When I was a board member, I didn't always know I can call I A S B for a question, like they don't run a tally, they're not going to charge me. And then man, once I found out, look out. Um, so, but our contact information is there, and there's really not a better phone call that we get than from a board member. So feel free to jump in on one thing on that.
Absolutely. So that you guys know as part of, um, the service, since you guys are members of the Iowa Association of School Boards, we have two attorneys on staff. I'm one of them. And, um, our other attorney, our legal services director, Anna Harmon, um, focuses, she can answer a lot, a wide variety of questions as well. But she also focuses on, um, employment law, uh, matters pretty well. And so if, um, you guys have questions and you would like some general information, we can provide that to you. If it's something really specific, a, a specific thing, or something that, uh, we think might veer into like a confidential matter for your district, we're of course going to advise you to contact your own legal counsel so that they can give you their, um, their, uh, legal advice and so that you can follow that, okay? But just know that that is something that you have available to you, um, and it's included as part of your membership.
All right, so let's look at page one of your packet. And I promise, we are not going to read to you all. We know you're illiterate. Uh, we, we're going to leave you though with some tools so that you can, um, you will have these, um, for your own repertoire. But just a couple of, uh, keynotes that will start off on the purpose of open meeting and public record law. Does anybody have any idea or guess how long open meeting law has been around? Like maybe since what year?
Nineteen sixty-seven.
Oh, you win the award! It's that right here. Um, I don't know about all of you, but nineteen sixty-seven wasn't that many years ago, depending on your perspective. And I wish I could say I read about it on the History Channel or something funny like that, but, uh, that's almost in my lifetime. So it's not really been around for that long. It is a great piece, though, where, and what I think about with this is it's the open and transparency piece, right? That the work of what you do is done in the public's view, just like tonight. So they get to come and listen. A really important piece of that is you are a meeting in the public. You are not a meeting of the public. As a board, you have to be able to conduct your business. You have to be able to talk to each other, you have to be able to get your work done. And just like the board, uh, or excuse me, just like your community gets to see you learn together, the community also sees you conduct your business. But you are the board, and you have to be able to ask each other questions and communicate with each other. Your community's opportunity, best opportunity, is before and after meetings, when there are questions. Or you all have ways they, uh, to be contacted, because I checked it out on your website. I can go and click. I found out that I can easily reach out to anybody, um, that way. So that's an important piece to remember. Um, the other piece is, it's that piece of, again, that public observation. When you sit on a board, you spend taxpayer dollars. So it's only fair, right, that that, that taxpayers are then seeing what is, what is happening? Um, and, and what does that look like? Without me reading through this piece, those, uh, couple of, there's three paragraphs there. I'm going to give you a task. What questions do you have about open meeting and public records? And remember, this isn't to know every single intricate piece. This is an opportunity to, let's talk through and dig in with some examples. So I don't want you to feel, there's no quiz in the end. I, you didn't do one, did you?
I totally did a quiz.
Okay, well, you're out of luck. See, there is.
Okay, because I can just stand under this green lit up X, and there's the trap door that, I don't know much of this world, but I know that that equals trap door.
Perfect. Scary. All right, here's what I'm going to do. Um, Siobhan and I are going to ask you, there's three questions that are on the bottom portion of page one. What I would like you to do is read through those three questions and jot some thoughts to yourself. If you are like me and you're not necessarily want to write it down, all right, get your thoughts organized. Because then I'm going to have you share with an elbow partner. And so if you're not a hundred percent sure on an answer, that's okay. That's why you're all going to talk that out, all right? But we're going to give you a few minutes. You can read through that top portion if you want, but just take a look at those questions and jot some notes to yourself. And I'm going to get my phone so I can set my timer, and I'll know.
One of us should be organized. I officially nominate you.
I went to page one. All right, those of you who are overachievers, look, you're already, uh, you're already getting in groups, all right? Now I am going to ask in this scenario, board members.
Mine doesn't have all the papers. Mine only has.
I thought he was just an overachiever. He's on page six already. Let me get you.
Siobhan, we're good.
We got it. So board members, I am going to ask you to partner with board members, not because we don't value all of you around the table. But, um, and, but the two, you.
Oh, yes.
And let's, if you want to do that, because we don't want to exclude you, but board members, we would like you to work together so that you're sharing your thoughts.
Sorry about that.
And we will mix you up eventually, so if somebody's got to move now, somebody else.
Yes.
Why don't you guys switch for a bit?
I think this is.
Really a trap door, but I can't stand it anymore. Don't try. I have a couple of things I wanted to share with them about this too, when you reconvene. Nope, they can, they can talk first and that's fine.
Okay. So you want to go and just share your thoughts here?
Maybe I did forget, right? But understanding.
You want to scare them?
Yes.
So, out of the benefit also, obviously, it's fair money, so they want to see what's going on.
So their money's being spent.
Sometimes it might be difficult to have an interesting.
And you may not be, but we have. Yep, exactly.
What can you do?
Especially difficult topics. Okay, your board meeting. Well, I think that, um, I think as you, since you are a, since you're representative of constituent.
Yeah, that's true.
Which would be treasured, um, responsible secretary on the period. So you may want to, I would say.
Yeah, I'm writing that down.
So make your point. You may want to.
And I write, I wish I were done with. And something like that.
Now it's.
I'm going to write that down.
Exactly. We're supposed to go on.
Number three.
Just the first three.
And then.
You can be the overachiever.
Do you think we stay here, like, we go?
Transparency.
You know? That's the right word, but. But they should be able to.
All right, friends, let's talk about a couple of things. By the way, I was really impressed as you opened your meeting tonight, and you, I see you have a couple of closed, um, agenda items. They were beautifully documented. Uh, it was interesting for me to hear as board members read that full piece. I'm like, you all did the whole verbiage, not just, it's already printed on the agenda, that's good enough. We might not have always done that. Um, that was beautiful to see that. So it's beautifully stated, it's beautifully documented. Uh, there are only a handful of reasons, okay, maybe a little more than a handful. Do you like to guess the number of reasons that you are allowed by law that are stated, not you all specifically, that you can go into closed session? This is my sort of fun fact, that and that nineteen sixty-seven is sort of when this started. I think it's like less than twenty-five, more than a hundred. What would you guess?
For reasons, you mean?
Yes.
Less than twenty-five.
Anybody else? Twelve. There are only twelve. So there aren't even, uh, that many reasons that the law says that you can do that. So, but you tonight, that was a perfect example. It was beautiful, so.
That's a nice tie into this. I'm going to jump in here really quick because I want to, um, Tammy did a nice job of sort of starting with the history of the open meetings law, um, back in the sixties. This was a really common thing nationwide to start enacting open meetings and public records laws at this time. Um, and a lot of it was, um, tied in part to, um, orgate. Because this is the first time as a society, we looked around and said, wait a minute, wait a minute. Government entities, different government subdivisions, are in charge of our most prized assets. In this case, it's really easy, our children and our tax dollars, right? So we should have the ability to see, um, the excellent work that these governmental subdivisions will do. That's our advance notice. The great work they're currently doing in open meeting. And the work that they've done in the past, public records, evidence of your past work. And that's where chapter twenty-one, the open meetings law, and chapter twenty-two, the public records law, come from. That's kind of the, the historical context. But I just wanted to tie that in there because, um, you're talking about closed sessions, and this is great. And this is one thing that should really be, um, highlighted when we're talking about engaging with chapter twenty-one, the open meetings law, is that when in doubt, it should be in the open, okay? And that is a, is a generalized best practice. Now, those twelve reasons that we have are really good compelling reasons, do not get me wrong, okay? As a society, we can say there are some carve-out except, exceptions. We know that when it comes to people's private medical records, that's probably not something we're going to be discussing in the open. It's not appropriate, right? And, um, maybe a student disciplinary matter, again, not appropriate for that child, right? So we do have those reasons, we use those reasons, and we should. But if there is a question, then when in doubt, you side with holding a discussion in the open. Okay. That's my little soapbox on that.
I love it. So it leads us beautifully into, what did you come up with for number one? Who would like to volunteer? What are some benefits of the board operating in a transparent fashion? Just shout out a couple of things.
They don't think we're hiding anything.
Beautiful. What else?
More trust in the system.
Okay. Anything else?
Increased understanding of what is being accomplished and what will be being, and decreases confusion.
When the board's consistent, it is really, really helpful. Believe it or not, it sends a cue to your public that the board, uh, that if I'm watching your meeting, I'm like, okay, clearly this is how you always operate. It gives me a sense of, I know what to expect. And when I see that you, even if I don't understand why you're doing something, but when I see you always do it that way, that consistency, it makes it easier when things are, I'm going to use the word icky or difficult, right? When there's times you're like, okay, we got to do something that's not going to be a lot of fun as a board, but we're going to do it the same way we do everything else. That consistency becomes really important, too. What could be some pitfalls or drawbacks of operating in a transparent fashion? And by the way, I heard all of you say some really great things, and I'm going to work my, I can't stand, I'm going to work my way over here. Because I heard you all have some really good things. Will you share?
Um, so one thing we said was sometimes issues and topics that develop or like continue over time aren't always, you know, at some points when they're brought back up, the current, um, the current audience only gets a snapshot.
Hmm. Yeah.
Another one would be, you know, as a board member, um, you know, we spend a lot of time before meetings, you know, looking up, uh, topics, um, helping, you know, our, helping ourselves understand topics. And that's really not seen because when we get to the board table, we're just, you know, we're taking care of business. So there's that unseen, it, it may look like we don't care or we're uninformed. We're really spent, you know, quite a bit of time before the meeting preparing so we know, you know, what we're doing.
Or maybe it's the sixth meeting that you've talked about it, right? To get to the place of where you are, that's brilliant. Anyone have anything additional they want to share to that?
Just put, um, privacy concerns and, you know, making sure that we're not, um, breaking that or, um, throwing things out there that may affect other people, um, because of our meetings discussion. And so sometimes it may not talk as freely just for your of those things.
I remember that feeling very, very well. I didn't want to say the wrong thing. I didn't want to say, I didn't want to sound dumb, right? I didn't want to ask a question, oh, I really do want to know that, but, and I was, well, sometimes I'm still worried about what's going to come out of my mouth. I had to really think about how do I ask or how am I going to state something? Um, and it's hard. It's, it's, i- in my opinion, you do, you are doing double duty. Trying to maneuver your way through a meeting plus really think carefully about those things. Anything else?
It just makes difficult topics a little bit harder because you want to be transparent. But difficult topics are sometimes hard to address because of the things that you've talked about where you don't want to say the wrong thing. But at the same time, you know, you have to tackle the problem, and being transparent sometimes in a public setting can be difficult.
And I would invite you to not be afraid to say any of those things that you just said. So let's say you have, uh, I'm not suggesting this is happening. Let's say you're going to make a million dollar purchase, and it comes up on your agenda, and boom, y'all vote and done, and you're on to the next thing. It's okay for somebody to say, we just made a vote on a million dollar purchase, and we didn't really talk about it because we've been talking about it for eight months. And so if it's the only meeting I catch, if it's the only meeting I've come to see, I now know, oh, it's not like you just poof, decide, it's okay to say those things. And it's okay to say, this is an emotionally charged topic, and it's really hard to do this in the public. Friends, you're sitting in front of an audience. That's hard, even when you're not making tough decisions, I think. I think it can be hard. That's how it felt for me. So say those things out loud. It's okay to do that. It's okay to acknowledge that.
One other thing I would add is, it's also okay to say, this is really awkward.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not natural to come in here and be like, okay, I'm going to read the entire section, subsection of the Iowa code in order to, uh, make a motion to enter into a closed session. But that's what the law requires, so that's what you're going to do. It's okay to acknowledge that, too. Well, yeah, this doesn't really feel normal or natural. This is what we're doing because it's, we're fulfilling our legal requirements, and we want to be able to operate in a transparent fashion. So acknowledging it, it at the table and with one another really does help with that.
It's hard to give the, um, I always said the spiel about, okay, you have three minutes, please step to the podium, say your name, address for the record, please remember. And it was like, I was giving someone a list of all the things they couldn't do. And then they speak to you, and then because it's not an agenda item, you don't get to give feedback. That's what the law says, and I know it's hard. And again, it's that feeling of awkwardness, it's the feeling of, I can tell by the way you're all are shaking your heads that you're like, it's not the, that's not, that's not what we want to portray, but it's also what you have to do. But it's that consistency of saying every single time, here's how we're going to do it, so everybody hears the same, the same thing. So I think those are, give yourself that grace. It's okay to say. I've read this a thousand times. I could read mine backwards in my sleep, I think. I think I could still. I think I could still do that. It's okay, say that. This is routine, this is a part of what we do, and so we wanna make sure that we're, we're doing that.
So I think we kinda jumped the gun and we started filling in for them, that one.
Oh, we did?
We totally did. Does anybody wanna add to the third question? How would you ameliorate some of that awkwardness, some of the, some of the pitfalls, things that we've talked about? Stuff that Tammy and I didn't touch on. We did that.
You're human. It's okay, again, to have those conversations, especially if you stopped at the grocery store. I don't understand, why aren't you telling me about, we didn't get to hear, I wanna know all the details about blah, 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 blah. It's okay, find your own words of saying, if only I could share that with you, but I can't, it's a privacy issue and my ice cream's melting, I gotta go. Right, it's, it's also okay to say that, friends, you can, you can end the conversation. There's, you give a lot of your personal time, it's okay to do that.
So the other thing that I would say is, because we're talking about what are possible remedies for, for some of the, you know, potential pitfalls. If you ever have a question, ask, don't be shy.
Yeah.
Ask someone, ask a, ask a, ask a board, a fellow board member that has a little experience. I don't know, maybe ask your board secretary who has just a touch of experience. So if you're ever, if you're ever unsure, right? I'm not sure if we can do this, can we, is this okay? It's okay to stop and ask, okay? Don't be afraid of risking, you know, again, the social awkwardness of taking a pause and asking, that's okay. That's a perfectly acceptable thing to do. And it's a resource that you have at your disposal.
Agreed. All right.
Next one?
Are you feeling solid on that? Because I think we've covered that about as much as we can. I know it's really exciting, you all should just try and contain your excitement, because I can see it on your faces. All right.
You need to chill out. So I want you to start.
See, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
You know, I mean, some people might be coming to the board for the first time, I mean, in the public, and then they say what they say. And I always say, you know, we're not, we can't comment on it because of it, but we are listening.
Yeah.
But still, it's, as you mentioned, it kind of feels awkward. And also when people, when you tell the public this, they'll still leave and say, well, they didn't say anything, even though you kind of told them that you can't say anything. Is there any, is there anything that, you know, we should do as a closing after that? Me again saying, again, remember, we cannot comment on this because this is an open means law, and then move on to the next person?
I think if you cover, well, one, I think you all have to find what works for you. Every board is unique, and find what feels natural to say. I think saying it once, I think that's okay. And I think slowing down enough, the other thing is, we tend, or my experience was, I got in such a routine, I knew exactly what I needed to say, and I'm waiting. I mean, I, I was sitting with you and I'm like, wait, who made the motion? Who made the second? Like, I'm ready to fill in the blanks for you, because I get it. And you're listening and you recognize board voices, right? So as you all are doing that and you're listening to each other and you're, it becomes so automatic. So what I would say is just take a breath before you read that, right? And really just, you did beautifully tonight, by the way, I'm not saying you didn't. Just really give it a couple of extra seconds, give it 10 extra seconds if you need to, to really let that sink in. I also needed to remind myself, because believe it or not, your audience might, your audience might not think about, but it's hard, it's hard for it not, for your, my experience, it was hard not to take it personally. Whatever they're coming to you with, they are coming to you with so much passion and so much care about their topic that you're going to, you're, you're going to hear that, you're going to see that, right? And, and for some, it is, it is their, their method. The other thing is, tell me, what's a better way that we get to have a conversation? I would try and remind constituents, if we wanna converse, we can do it before a meeting. Maybe not right before a meeting when you're trying to get organized, but you could do it, catch me after a meeting. Our board secretary can give you my cellphone number, or our email addresses are on the website. You could always reach out to us so that they have that outlet as well. But it is hard, it is very hard to say, and you'll still have some that will say, they didn't care, they didn't listen. So the case, but the law tells us, if it's not an agenda item, I can't address it.
You could have a statement that you read following the conclusion of a public forum that reiterates the beginning statement. And that would be something that I would encourage you, if you want to have language, you know, just, just to reiterate or just as a reminder, this is the process that we use. You could absolutely consider doing that. Couple things, I would just work with your school legal counsel when you draft the statement. Just have, run it by them just to make sure they say, yep, that this is consistent. And then, of course, you're gonna wanna use it consistently every time. So those are just two considerations. But when it comes to this, that, that, that's what I would say is, you, you absolutely could do it. It would be one of those things where if the majority of the time you have one or two people come up to speak, then maybe it's so close in time from when you started with your statement that you, you don't think you need it. But, you know, for those hot topics where they draw a larger crowd, you know, could you read that same statement periodically as you're calling on people? I don't see why that would be a bad thing, you know, every fifth, every fifth speaker or something like that. You could just reread your statement, hey, just reiterating, I'm just restating in case anybody new came in. And again, it's just to over communicate. This is our process and this is what we have to abide by. But yeah, that would be appropriate.
Great question.
Yes. Any other questions before we move on to the next one? Page three, in one of open meetings.
I have one other question, I don't know if this is relevant, but I mean, is there any other tips that you can give us? Because I think that a lot of people who, when I talk to them about the public and they come to our board meetings and they, if we get, let's say, a hot topic, we have a bunch of people who are here, there is that perception that, well, board meetings are, are meant to be interaction between the public and us. And that is not the case. They are there to observe, they get their chance to say what they wanna say, but then we have to conduct business.
Yes.
And all the conversation has to be amongst all of us here in the board. But then they kind of, the public wants to constantly ask us questions and wants us to be the interaction, which we, you know, we can't do that because we have to conduct our business and unless it's a topic that we're dealing with, then they can comment for three minutes on the topic and then that's it. But this interaction back and forth, the questions back and forth is never gonna get anything accomplished, so we're not supposed to do that. Or we, we're not supposed to do that because we have to conduct business. So how do we let the public know that that's how we conduct business here? That it's meant for you to observe us in our discussions and making discussions, and you do get a chance to make a comment, but that's about the extent of it.
Two thoughts, two thoughts on this, and you can take it for what it's worth. You can take it, leave it. One, include that in your agenda. Let everybody know. Hey, these are our rules of play. Keep them short and digestible, but you can just toss it on every agenda that you have, okay? So that it's there, this is, this is how this works. And then the second one is, and this one's much harder to do, you gotta police yourselves. Because if questions are asked, are you answering? As opposed to a polite reminder of, hey, I hear you, you know, we would love to receive an email on that topic. We're going to, for purposes of.
Mr. Dodd's asked a question.
Sure.
And I was like, well, he's only supposed to make a comment, he's not supposed to ask a question. So not quite, I let Brian answer, but I get questions all the time. But technically, in our policy, it says, you make a comment, you shouldn't be asking a question.
So.
Then do I just say, I'm sorry, we can't answer that question?
Yep, you just say, sorry, this is our process that we're using and it's at the top of the agenda. And again, you just, you, you point them back to it, you know? In order to conduct the business of the board, we need to do it this way, but we still wanna hear from you. And then reiterate what the avenue is for someone to contact you guys, right? So if you want to put those rules of play on your agenda, do you also wanna list an email address as a contact? If you have questions about what you said, what you heard tonight, or you wanted to follow up on something, we want you to send them to, right here, okay? Something along those lines. Those are processes that you guys could choose as a board to put into place.
I think the other important piece to that is always giving the why, right? So I, it's just one question, why can't you answer my one question? Because if all of a sudden you have 300 people, you gotta answer all 300 if they wanna ask a question. And so for you to set consistency so that it's clear, I've never seen the board, they don't do that. Well, they, they must not, maybe I don't know why, but if I've never seen it happen, then I know. And again, keep talking about it. It's not because, you're not taking questions because you don't wanna talk to people. You're taking questions because you all spent an hour or more to prepare for a meeting, to get your questions organized, to get your thoughts. You need to hear from each other. Now is, now is your time. And you're doing it in front of the public so they can hear you, but now is your time to do that. And reiterate, what's the method of how I'm gonna ask you those questions? But we don't take, we don't take questions during the meeting because we are a meeting in the public. We are not a meeting of the public. One of my favorite parts of all of the chapter codes that I don't quote quite as well as Siobhan does, no, I just call them chapter codes, is there's also something that says you have to be able to conduct your business. Like, I can't come in with a, you know, a circus or a three ring band or just be really loud and obnoxious and stop your meeting. Like, the, the code's very clear, it says you have to be able to conduct your business. Not that that's happening, I'm not saying that, but it's an important piece as well. Okay?
These are great questions. We are probably on track for four and a half hours.
Perfect!
I want to, I wanna make sure that we're still covering all the substantive information that you guys need to, need to engage in tonight. So I want you to take a look at number three, or page three, the who and what of open meetings. And I'm gonna give you kind of some high level information. So when we talk about an open meeting, an open meeting is a meeting of the majority of the board where some type of discussion or action is taking place on something that is within your power to make decisions on, related to this district. Okay? That's Siobhan's recap of the actual legal definition. I could word for word the legal definition, but this is really it, okay? If you're talking about something, or you're gonna act on something, and there's a majority of you and it relates to this district, probably a meeting is taking place, an open meeting is taking place. And so because of that, you need to have advance notice. You need to have provided that agenda notice to your public, okay? Post your agendas 24 hours in advance, they're physically posted in the district. It's a nice courtesy to post them on the website, too. And they should be accessible to folks. And you guys, I have to tell you, I will say, I would give the blue ribbon to be all blue ribbons when I looked at this agenda because it's one of my favorite little games when I look at an agenda, a board agenda, to see how many acronyms are listed. Because keep in mind, when you're, we're talking about giving your public advance notice, it's really easy in the education community to rely heavily on acronyms, okay? You have a PSYAC. You have, I mean, just absolutely everything, right? There is an acronym for everything. And so the, one of the things that I see the most for boards is that on their agenda, they'll have a ton of acronyms. That's really hard for an average member of your community to understand what it is you guys are gonna be talking about or acting on. So taking the time to spell them out is incredibly helpful. And this one is like darn near perfect. So very nice job on making sure that your information is accessible and so that your public has a reasonable idea of what's going to take place, right? What you guys are gonna talk about, what you guys are gonna act on. So we talked about the definition for an open, for an open meeting. And then, I'm gonna stop it there. We're gonna do the first section and then probably as a, maybe a big group, wanna do that?
Sure.
And then we'll talk about committees because we have to also consider any types of committees that you guys have. Do you have standing committees? No standing committees, do you have any ad hoc committees? Does the whole board know the difference between the two? You don't have them and you don't use them, you may not be familiar with them.
It's okay if you don't.
Yeah, so a standing committee is a committee that has an ongoing obligation. So the board gives a little bit of its authority to a committee to say, okay, we need a small group to become really, really well versed in this one topic, do a deep dive. So maybe a policy review committee. I'm going to pick on that because I'm a policy nerd and I apologize for all those policies that you got supervised. But sorry, not sorry, that's the law. And so a policy review committee might be a standing committee that digs deep into looking at revisions, possible revisions of policies, and then presents it to a board. An ad hoc committee is a committee that's temporary in nature. So that one is designed to do, to fulfill one particular task. We need you to dive deep and research on this one topic. And then once you provide, provide your information and recommendation to the board, the committee's done, okay? So different districts use them to different degrees. I don't think Davenport can blink without having a committee. I mean, they, they have a lot of committees, don't they have, they have, they have several, right? And that's just a, for instance, as a, as a neighbor. So there are a whole wide variety ways of doing it, but I just simply wanted you guys to be aware of those differences when we're talking about terminology, so you know. With that being said, digging into this, who and what of the open meetings, I want you to take a look at this. There's three big questions here. And these are for instances, they're situations. I want you to take a couple of minutes, read through them and kind of think to yourself, or you can even jot down a note or two, of what you would advise. What, what do you think is gonna, is the answer? And then we'll discuss it as a big group.
You wanna need to talk through your questions, friends? Three members of a five-member board, or if we said four members of a seven-member board, friends, you get together for coffee an hour before the meeting because you really just wanna catch up. Seems like a great idea. What do you think? Is a meeting occurring? I'm hearing a yes.
Does it depend upon what they're discussing?
Well, let's talk about that!
I can have coffee with my friends.
Excellent.
Okay.
I love this. This is exactly what we should have, is some disagreement, okay? Because this is where the rubber meets the road. And yes, it's an, it depends. Because, what are you guys talking about? Is it purely social? This is a tough thing, you know, when you have a seven-member board, the one thing you guys all have in common is your board service, right? So it's the easy default to discuss. And it takes some discipline in order to actually make sure that that's, you're, you're saving those discussions, those substantive discussions for the board table, right? With that being said, it, when on its face, is, is a meeting occurring? Maybe, maybe not. How does this look to your public, though? Let's say you are meeting with buddies and it is purely social. How does it look?
It's like you might be discussing things and alluding.
I say that I want to have coffee with my four school board colleagues, but I would never do it because of the way it would look, even though we're talking about our vacations and our kids. I wouldn't do it. I should be able to, but I wouldn't, if that makes sense.
Makes great sense. My, one of my former board members, Erin, we would wa, and then we were a seven-member board, we'd walk into Hy-Vee together and all of a sudden I'd be like, you go to produce and I'm going to frozen. And it was only two of us. But, you know, and we laugh about that, but it's that idea of if all of a sudden you stand and you're talking in the cereal aisle, we're a small community, when somebody's zipping up and down, you know darn good and well, somebody's going, well, I know what they're talking about. Or how about if it's after the board meeting? And we all walk out to the parking lot. And it's a beautiful night. Y'all got stuck in this boardroom for like three hours and you just wanna catch up. And I drive by. Is the meeting occurring? That perception is really, really tough. And I hope you all say things like that out loud more often. I really wanna go have coffee with four of you, just to be social. But I know it's not in the best interest of the board. It's okay, say that stuff out loud.
Which three don't get to go?
I know. I think it was gonna be at a rotating basis and eventually she would hit all four, that right? Is that what you were thinking?
So one member, and we'll talk about walking quorums at another point. One member of a board can only attend tonight's meeting electronically, and without them, there isn't a quorum. If they appear electronically while the rest of the board is in person, is the meeting occurring?
When you say about tracking, do you mean like Zoom or something?
Or on the phone?
Yes, if everyone can see them and hear them.
You just got, Molly gets a gold star.
Gold stars.
Oh my gosh, yes, that is it.
She looks nervous. If you can, if you can, if you can hear and be heard by one another in real time, then you're present. So that, that is the standard. Now, one thing I will say, and this is important to consider, is that you need a, you need a dedicated connection, okay? Because if the person's connection is really spotty, and they freeze up, or they, well, then they're not, they're not present for that, that portion of the discussion, right? And that could drop your, your quorum down, so it can be a little bit tricky to navigate in that situation. But yeah, if you guys, as a board, can hear and be heard by one another in real time, then you get counted for purposes of establishing a quorum, and for purposes of saying, yep, is this a meeting or is this not a meeting? Does that make sense? Brian, did you have a question?
I was going to say, does it matter if it's on the length of time that they're with you, so they can start with you, and they can stay with you for X amount of time through most of the motions that have to be required? Is that okay? And then they step away, or should they be there for the entire meeting?
If they're the only person that's establishing your quorum, then as soon as they are not there, no business can be conducted. So that is one thing to keep in, to keep in mind. So if you, if you, if you get them for purposes of, you know, multiple action items, and then the rest of it is, okay, well, the meeting is adjourned, but we are, you know, the remainder of us are going to stay, and we're going to continue just these discussion, or this discussion with no action, you could choose to do that. You just want to make sure that that's very well-known to your community, so they understand why. Okay, well, we're below a quorum, so we can still talk about stuff, we can't act on anything right now. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
We had, you and I had a good conversation about this not that long ago. Isn't as much a forum, please? It's not that a person can't sort of drop in electronically to vote on something.
Oh, no.
We have heard that whole conversation, and so they're not just, hi, A, I, you know.
Right.
And that helped me, your discussion with me helped a great deal in understanding.
Well, thanks. The, so, very good point. When it comes to action items on the agenda, your board member should be present for the entire item, for the discussion, if they're going to be acting. In order to fulfill your own duties, in order to make these informed decisions, you have to, you have to be there for the information sharing. So that is something to keep in mind. If you, if you're needed, your presence is needed pretty desperately for something, please make sure that you guys can, can be present for the entire, the entirety of the discussion before you take action on it. And same thing, just to piggyback off of that, there really isn't an avenue in the law, and probably nor should there be, for voting by proxy, okay? You gotta be, you gotta be present in person or electronically in order to, to cast your vote. Nobody gets to vote for you. You guys could see that, that would snarl situations pretty bad, especially when there's a split decision. Number three, the board uses, I love this one, shared electronic documents, so think Google Docs, right? To provide comments on the superintendent's evaluation. To protect the superintendent's privacy, access to the docs is limited only to members of the board. Is a meeting occurring? I got a no. Any others?
I didn't answer that one.
That's beautiful honesty!
It's up with time, and you can't see or hear it, right? So, okay.
Wouldn't it be kind of along the same lines of like text messages and things like that? Something that could be shared with the public?
So it's, this would be, still probably be confidential, because if it's related to the superintendent's evaluation, and the board is, it's, it's limited, access is limited only to the board. So I wouldn't say it's necessarily a public document, but your point is very well-made, because this actually is something that the Supreme Court, the Iowa Supreme Court, has gotten really close to looking at, but hasn't fully weighed in on this exact scenario. What they've done is they've given us some guidance on it. And what they've said is you got to watch out that shared documents and the board engaging in a substantive discussion by placing comments in the shared documents isn't getting close to essentially a walking quorum. So an opportunity where, yep, there's, there's discussion, there's deliberation happening. So we want to be really mindful of that with shared documents. If the entirety of the board has access to a shared document, like an evaluation tool, right? That you have parameters in place for how you're going to utilize that, so that it doesn't accidentally, by default, turn into a meeting. Does that make sense? Because you can still have the discussion in a closed session with proper notice, right? And the board action to go into the closed session.
Even if the answer was yes, it's a meeting, it still qualifies to be closed session. Rule under section, whatever I'm looking at here, your website.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't, no, it doesn't.
Talking about personal evaluation of the?
It does, but you haven't given notice to your public with an agenda? You haven't given the board the proper notice to talk about it, and to decide whether or not they want to enter into the closed session? Because they have to vote to enter into a closed session. So that's, you're right, topically, it does. It would qualify as a closed session. But procedurally, you have to still go through the process, so that your public has an opportunity to understand the work that is going to take place. Does that make good sense? Shared docs are one, are, they are one, they're a concept that gives me a little bit of heartburn.
So you're saying that it's, we're not sure if it's a meeting or not, but it can be construed as?
Yeah, it could be construed as a meeting. And the reason I'm saying it, I'm not 100% sure that it's a meeting, or it's not a meeting, is because, again, it sort of depends on the nature of the comments. Are they building off of one another? Is it happening in close proximity timewise? So there are some factors that, that we know we can, we can look for. But this is where I would exercise caution and restraint when, if you guys ever, are ever utilizing something like a shared document.
Siobhan, if we're all submitting our comments independently, we're doing it electronically, but we're not doing it by a shared doc.
You don't see each other's comments?
Correct.
There's no deliberation.
So if you're, how, you know, it's, it's not, because you got to get your comments to somebody, I'm guessing, right? When you're working through that evaluation? So just that you're not looking at what everybody's, until everybody does it together in the meeting where you've announced, and you said, probably like you did, I bet, get ready for tonight. I guess.
Brian, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. The last one, I forgot there was a number four. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it or not. The board gathers to attend IASB's annual convention, rah rah, November 16th, where they engage in board learning together. No district issues are discussed during the gathering, but the board is engaged in learning about topics relevant to their board service. Is a meeting occurring? So you guys all travel out to Des Moines for the annual convention. You have your full board there. Hooray, you're all going to engage in learning. What do you think? Is that a meeting? Do you drive together? Separate?
We've never driven more than a quorum. Different people who are going out, we've never, never ridden more than four in a car.
Okay.
I would say no, because no district issues are being discussed.
Agenda.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think you're safe. But I will tell you, we tell districts, as a best practice, you give notice. The board, or a majority of the board, will be traveling to Des Moines for, to attend IASB's annual convention, to engage in board learning. No meeting is occurring, no district business will be acted on or deliberated. We just wanted to give you guys the courtesy of a heads-up that, yep, we're all going to be in the same place. And we're going to engage in learning. But it's not specific to our district. Does that make sense? That's an okay thing to do, is to provide your community that type of notice. And that would work for a ministerial function, too. Some districts like to do that for graduation ceremonies. Yep, the board's actually going to be all together, and it's really, it, I know it seems kind of common sense, well, solely ministerial, you don't have to provide notice. Some districts do choose to still provide a courtesy statement. Yep, we know our parameters, we're not going to discuss board business, but we are all together for this, for this ministerial function.
Is that kind of where you would put that? You know, we have like these future dates. You'd kind of put it like it as an FYI down there?
You could. Otherwise, you could actually basically just post it like you would post an agenda, but it's a statement. Hey, just giving you guys a courtesy heads-up, this is what we're going to be doing.
But I love it on the future dates, too. You're always, well, it helps your board members, because they're looking at the agenda, and oh, yeah, I need to remember that. Plus, you're, it's one more time, you are saying to your public, right? We may be, we may be together in there, we may have a quorum.
Yes, so I want to, I'm just looking at the time here. You guys don't use committees. I still want to touch on this, because I want to make sure that you guys are familiar with a couple of concepts. Dig into this quite as much. You should still just have some familiarity. We talked about standing committees, the ongoing ones, and ad hoc committees, the temporary ones. Boards can use these in different ways. And I'm going to guess that you do have some committees, because you mentioned that you have a reconsideration committee. So there is a committee in the district. Now, maybe it's not board-appointed, maybe it's administratively-appointed. I'm not sure how you guys have it set up, but either way, there should be a question in the back of your mind is, does this committee, if it's created either by the board or the superintendent, qualify as being subject to the open meetings law? Okay? So that should be a, a question that you have in the back of your mind. And I will tell you that there's actually, there isn't a 100% bright line, this, then that, rule, because we have some Supreme Court case law on this called Mason versus the Iowa, Iowa Vision Board, Vision, Vision Iowa Board? Did I get that right? Iowa Vision Board, thank you. And what it says is, a committee that is created by your board, or potentially your superintendent, could be subject to the open meetings law if it is given some specific, if it's delegated some specific authority to not just make a generalized recommendation, but to actually take action in some fashion, okay? So that's kind of what we look for, to see whether or not a committee might also be subject to our open meetings law. And if it is, then we do, we want to follow the same steps. We provide advance notice to our public by posting an agenda. We stick to the agenda, and then we have, we take minutes, and then we publish those minutes after the meeting. So that just bigger concept is something that you guys should be aware of, right?
We've seen the board policy on ad hoc. If we're going to form an ad hoc, there's a policy that works through that.
Yes. Yep. Absolutely. It's in the 200 series, no big deal. So something to be aware of. Questions about committees.
This isn't necessarily specific to a committee, but I would like to share with all of you a thought, and that is, whether you are in a meeting with a committee, whether you are in a regular board meeting, you should never have to feel unsafe. This topic is near and dear to my heart, because I have experienced this. And if you feel you need to take a recess, you take a recess. If the temperature of the room is of such that you just need to take a recess, so the board gets to literally take a breath, you have every right to do that. I would not expect that to be something, I would have never expected I would need to do that. I wouldn't ever, I wouldn't expect it would be something you would need to do very often. But if someone feels that uncomfortable, if the board chair can sense that, if somebody says, I'd like to motion a recess, don't be afraid to use that. Now, no business occurs, but it's okay for everybody to walk out of the room, take a breath, or collect your thoughts, or whatever that needs to be. My wish for you is you don't ever have to do that. But I also, you should never feel, you should never feel fearful either of what's happening. So that is a tool in your tool chest. Take a recess if you need to do that. It's okay to take a recess if somebody needs to use the restroom, by the way. Or you've had a really long meeting, or maybe you do it between your regular session and your closed session. We're going to take a five-minute recess, so everybody gets to take a breather. Use that tool. I've, I've seen it, I've seen the need to use it far too much in our recent history. Don't be afraid to do that. That's my soapbox.
No, it's an important one.
Somebody can make a motion, or I can just say, we're going to have to do it after a motion is made.
I'm going to tell you, if you feel really, I mean, if there is, if, if there is danger, I didn't wait for a motion. I slammed, oh, I didn't slam, I shut my laptop, and I said, we're taking a recess. And the exact thoughts in my mind were, I hope you all are following me. Now, we'd please clear out our room. We had please come and wait with the board while we did that. But I didn't wait for a motion, and I prob, and I waited too long. Hindsight's always 20/20. I should have done it. In fact, I said to my superintendent later, I was like looking at you. I was waiting for the earth to open up and swallow me whole. And you know what his response was? I was looking at you, trying to tell you to take a recess! So we laughed about that. Ideally, if somebody, you know, and maybe somebody, maybe there's a need that, you know, board chair, maybe you aren't, you aren't aware of, and somebody says, I'd like to motion for a recess. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Doesn't have to be long. But if there is danger, and I think my, I think my attorney friend will back me up, if there's danger, or you're really fear, take the recess, get out of the room. It's okay, you'll figure out the notes.
Danger, don't worry about motions, leave. Come on.
You leave, but the meeting's still then going to go.
You got to protect yourselves. You got to protect, but I'm talking about, there's an immediate danger. Absolutely nobody should be sitting here going, well, I'd like to make a motion. Is there a second? No, you need to take care of yourselves.
Because the reason why we did it is because somebody felt very da, felt threatened at this meeting that day.
I understand.
So how would that should have been handled, then?
Procedurally, ideally, parliamentary procedure tells us, okay, it doesn't just have to come from the board chair, any board member can make a motion to recess, okay? And you can second, there can be a second, and you just go ahead and go. You approved, go, all right? There, you don't have to have discussion on this, it's a question of privilege, right? So you can just approve it and go. I'm talking about, like, you know, the fire alarm goes. It's okay to stand up and say, recess, right? Now, everybody's got it, we're taking a recess. This is an okay, this is an okay, appropriate action to take. When you're talking about, subjectively, someone feels like, kind of verbally attacked, right? During the course of a meeting, and they're, they're becoming, they're becoming a little overwhelmed. They're saying, you know, this is too much for me. I would encourage you guys as a board to proactively discuss that. You could do it right now, you could do it in a future meeting. How do we want to handle that? But in theory, you, you kind of, if someone says, look, I'm, I'm over, I'm feeling overwhelmed, I would like to take a recess, then hopefully you guys are supporting one another as a board team. And someone, yep, I'll second that, and then you can head into recess. Does that make sense?
And I'm thinking also, it's probably a short recess, maybe it's right, you're not adjourning your meeting, but you are, you are modeling behavior for your staff, for your students. And wouldn't we want them to be able to say, I gotta raise my hand and say, it's too much right now, and I need five minutes? Wouldn't we all support that for any of our staff, any of our students? It's okay for you to say it, too.
So then, when you come back, five, 10 minutes, then do you address the public and say, listen, we went into recess because people, some people were feeling very threatened. I want to repeat the rules here. Is that what you do?
I think that that is.
Because otherwise, it could just get, we'd be constantly going into recess all the time.
Yep, and I think.
It needs to continue to get out of control, and so we don't want to keep doing that either.
Nope, that's a very fair statement. And so I think it's, I think to say, the board took a recess because, and I would probably think about just maybe softening that language a little bit, right? Tensions got really, really high. The board has work to do. You have the right to ask someone to leave a meeting. Now, what you all have to decide is, if, if, if they are very disruptive, I was in a place where I had to do that, it was a little bit easier, because I had police there. Somebody did that for me, right? You, you don't, you don't want to be to that place. But the law does say you have to be able to do your work without an interruption. Disruption, I should say, right? So that you can continue to talk and have that conversation. By the way, recessively didn't help us. We were so far down the path that even when we came back, it wouldn't have mattered what I said. Was not, by the way, was not a shining moment. I mean, I say, I, no one, no one should have to go through that.
You guys and your work across Iowa, I mean, I came from Minnesota, where it was very common practice that police officers just came to the meeting. Is that common practice across Iowa? That that just? Is that common practice across Iowa, that that just happens or does it depend?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to southeast Iowa or I'll speak to the east side of the state, because friends, you've seen it happen in your own backyard. I've seen it happen in your neighbor's backyard. Uh, we did it for a period of time. It also probably doesn't feel really good to your community to walk in and see, right? Officers there, you all will have to balance between safety and what's the need and, and what's the message that you want to send. I've not seen it for quite a while now, there was a period of time where it felt a little, felt a little too common.
No, I will say, there are, there are actually multiple districts in the state that just have an open invitation to their, uh, local law enforcement to attend the meeting. And the law enforcement has made a commitment to support their school district. And to say, yep, we're just gonna, uh, there'll always be somebody there and it's not in necessarily in an official capacity. They're there just to hear about the work that the district is doing. That, it's very specific to individual communities. And I will say, probably the practice does vary depending on the size of the community. So.
Yeah.
And I would say this, I guess, Dr. Wogly's always done a very good job of trying to be very respectful to everybody in our audience. Give everyone a voice to listen to and we've tried, always tried to do a very good job of listening to everybody. And he always hoped that in that situation, if you take a recess and you come back, that you can reiterate, here's the reason we took a recess and it's one to respect each other and make sure we're all working together. And to have that trust and that feeling of this is why we're doing this. And if someone feels that they have the right to continue to go out that and continue to ask questions or threatening remarks, and that's a whole, I, how do you stop that in, in, in that regard, say, listen, this, we are here working together for kids and let's not have this and we gotta sit down and just say, please respect what we're doing here.
So in those rare instances where things get so disruptive that, um, one recess, maybe two recesses, is not calming down the overall temperature of the room and it's to the point where the board can't conduct their business, then you, then my suggestion would probably be to adjourn.
And come back on a different day.
Yes.
And have the conversation.
And that really stinks because it's a big waste of school district resources, which are funded by taxpayer dollars to have the building available and to have staff here to be able to have the meeting in the first place. So having to stop it and then come back in the future again, i- it's, it's not efficient. But in that situation, if you can't conduct your business, then you can't conduct your business. I mean, try and work with the, with the group that you have first, try the, try the recesses. Because that, that hopefully that people, when you have a, take a break and you come back and you explain it, people are willing to, okay, yep, we're passionate, but we still want this meeting to continue. Um, hopefully you get that buy-in, but no, I mean, otherwise then you adjourn because you can't conduct your business. These are really great questions, these are some of the most challenging, um, behavioral aspects of board service, in my opinion.
I think we're asking this because we've encountered this as well.
And you're not alone.
And, you know, in my first six years of the board, I'd never encountered it, in the last three years, I've encountered it multiple times.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, my friend, I hear you.
This is, this is, this is a common trend.
And then, you know, I've had some disruptive people, they've had their three minutes and they make comments again and I will say to them, you know, you need to stop saying what you're saying, you, you're not, you're out of order here. They steep, keep interrupting me at that point. Well, can I just say, you need to be removed, I mean, how many chances do you give somebody?
A, a couple of things that I would, uh, invite you to think about, somebody had a timer tonight that was perfect.
Yes.
Don't shut the timer off. Um, it's hard, it's hard when you're really passionate about something and you're gonna come up here and you're gonna deliver a message and you're not gonna get a response and it is about one of the most important things in your life and you want to get all your words in. I can't say my name and where I'm from in three minutes, I just can't, right? Um, what are things that you can do to help with that? Uh, maybe your timer goes up on the screen. Yes, it's kind of intimidating to see that, but then I visually see, okay, my time's running out, my time's running out, my time's running out. Um, I, we needed, we had a period of time where we couldn't get people to stop and so I remember I looked at our tech director and I said, don't shut the timer off. And he is the nicest guy in the entire world and you would have thought I had asked him to kill someone. I mean, he's like, I, but I can't do that and I'm like, this is what we need to do. And, and we just tried to find consistent ways of, how do we help somebody to see how mu, three minutes isn't much? And again, give them, right, other avenues of, and I think the statement you made ahead of the meeting, right? The things that you do to start setting that up and you're always, always talking about it and the why behind it. Because you are gonna be here till midnight at the rate we're going, um, right? I mean, that you're, you have a lot of business to conduct. And so it's not that you don't want to hear from somebody, it's your time right now, you've got to manage it well. And I'm gonna guess, y'all did eight hours of something else today. Right?
And this isn't purely, um, actually related directly to open meetings and public records, but do keep in mind when you're talking about enforcing the policies that you have in place, that they do need to be enforced consistently regardless of viewpoint or the content of the speech.
Exactly.
So it, it, it applies to everybody, I don't care if Tammy comes up here and she's like, I just want to spend the next four and a half minutes telling you guys how much I adore you. Okay? That is really great, but your limit is three. So that basketball buzzer had better be going at three, right? So, um, or whatever, whatever you end up using, but it, just make sure that it is being enforced very consistently. And it sounds like you guys do a really nice job of that.
And spending time just talking about it, just like you are tonight, it's a great piece for your public to see.
I wanted to highlight this slide in particular on, um, IPB's training because it talks about, um, task forces and subcommittees and things like that. Do those apply, um, to the open meetings law? This just kind of gets to, gets back to what we were talking about and the answer is, they can, yes. And, um, there are the specific legal references up here for the situations in which they can apply. But again, I'm just kind of drawing you back to this resource, the IPB, um, PowerPoint, so that you guys see that you have that available to you, um, and you can continue to reference it. There are, I will say, um, there are maybe one or two things that are just slightly, um, out of date uh, because we've had more recent law changes in the last couple of years on IPB, but it won't substantively change the quality of this resource for you. And IPB is aware of it and they're actually in the process of, um, updating it at some, you know, in the near future.
I would only add one thing that where I don't think the law is reflective of what's going on now. That is, when it comes to questions, you're all volunteers. And when you're sitting there and you're being threatened, I didn't volunteer for this, I didn't volunteer this, I'm not coming back. I'm done. So now you form a new committee and you start all over again, is that, is that what you do?
First things first, these are all volunteers. Right?
These are all elected, I'm talking about ad hocks.
Okay, but they still volunteered for, for the position.
Isn't that?
Their, their, their super high board salaries, um, are, uh, are, are very esteemed. With that being said, your point is really, is, is the heart of what I think a lot of districts are feeling in the state right now. Because we have, I, we have heard this, um, very consistently for the past 18 months. That we can't even staff a reconsideration communit, or committee. This is, this is like a huge thing out by me in the metro. They can't, they can't actually find anybody that's willing to serve on a reconsideration committee. Because of the, um, deluge of, uh, of.
Threat.
Yeah.
I don't know how to say it.
Yeah, I mean, the, just, just the commu, the nature of the communications that they're receiving are particularly, um, passionate to the point of hateful. Um, directed at the person, I should say, right? Um, and so that, that is a complaint that we're hearing, that we know about. Um, I don't have a solution for you. I don't have a fix for you. I wish I did. Um, but as of right now, this is, this, this is what the law requires. Um, that you need to analyze those committees to see whether or not, yep, this meets the threshold of it, it qualifies for falling under the open meetings and then you gotta, you gotta respect that and, and follow it.
But we're seeing the same with board members and with seats being given up.
Yeah.
Mid, midterm, don't any, even get any idea. Um, it's hard.
Yeah.
And for the same reason, I, people will say to me, I just talked to an amazing human who stepped off of her board and she's like, Tammy, I didn't sign up for this and I'm like, I get it, I really do. And especially if you have children that you, you know, I just, there, there are many elements to that, so, um, yeah. All right, now.
It is. Any ques, any other questions about committees before we start walking into agendas and minutes?
Okay.
So if you take a look at page five, I'm going to give you kind of the, the, the high level of this, we've already talked about agendas a little bit, but there are some, some pretty big rock basics that you should be aware of when it comes to agendas. You need to post them at least 24 hours in advance of your meeting. There is an exception for an emergency. Okay, what would be an example of an emergency? Well, an emergency exists when you have to meet in less than 24 hours because if you don't, it, your options of what you could possibly do will change, it'll change the outcome, okay? If you can, wait 25 hours to hold that meeting. And the reason that, I used to say before the pandemic, oh, emergency meetings rarely ever come up. And then COVID hit and we were holding emergency meetings all the darned time because we didn't know, I mean, the world changed every single day. So there were new rules, new things that you had to respond to, new ways you had to act or things that you had to consider and you had to do it right away because if you waited, that option may not be available to you. Right? Um, it would change what the possible outcome would be. So yes, that's a very appropriate situation in which to hold an emergency meeting. What sometimes happens for districts is that they have a really emotionally compelling topic that is suddenly erupting in the district. Not that this is whatever happened for you guys, but it goes, it spreads like wildfire. You know, you, you thought it was a beautiful sunny morning and by 2:00 PM, I mean, everyone's hair is on fire, right? But if holding an emergency meeting to discuss or take action on that topic isn't actually going to change the outcome, it's just a really compelling thing that you want to be able to talk about, that's probably not a legitimate basis for holding an emergency meeting. Okay? So just keep that in the back of your mind that you need to be outcome focused when we, when we have a question about, is it an emergency? Um, with that being said, so you have your agenda, you post it 24 hours in advance, you post it somewhere in the district, um, usually the central administration building, um, or a central office. It should be visible ideally, um, when the doors are shut. This was a new requirement, um, or interpretation from the executive director, the then executive director of the Iowa Public Information Board who said, hey, look, during the pandemic, if buildings are shut and you don't have, and the public can't open your building, having it on a bulletin board inside the building doesn't really help. So maybe put it on like an exterior facing window that's, um, near the front door or just post it on the fr, um, the exterior of the front, the front door. They said this was, this is considered from IPB, a best practice of ensuring that your public can see the agenda. Okay? Um, it's also a nice courtesy to put it on your website, but it's not a legal requirement. And if members of your media request to have, or your community requests to have, to be notified before a meeting, you need to email it to them too. Okay? So those are my, my top tips. Now, we talked about, um, and I said, you guys are a blue ribbon district for your amazing agendas, having almost no acronyms at all whatsoever. That is a beautiful thing because our standard is, you need to give enough information for members of your public to have a general idea of what topic is gonna be discussed or acted on. Okay? It's not enough to just list, um, let's say for, and I, and I'm using this as an example on your agenda for today, you have old business. If you guys had said, under that topic, if you, someone said, well, you know, I actually have something I want to bring up, it's old business. Wait a minute. Just because this says old, old business, that's not sufficient. You needed to have some type of sub, some, some additional explanation on your agenda in order for that to satisfy, which you guys didn't have any old business, so that's why I use this as an example for tonight.
I just really like your agendas. They're really quite nice.
So I talked about agendas and advance notice, um, minutes. This one, boards don't tend to have as much interaction, but you should know about minutes, um, the basics. Because if you're ever in a scenario where you decide to hold a closed session and you would like to excuse your board secretary from that closed session, you can do that. That means that one of you guys has to choose to be the reporting secretary for that closed session. Right? So someone is going to be responsible for doing the recording and for taking minutes. And in a closed session, ooh, it's a bigger burden because you actually have to take detailed minutes. Okay, so you want to have, you want to have some more substantive, um, information available. So generally speaking, with our regular minutes for our open meetings, you have to show the date, the time, the location of the meeting, which board members were present and who voted on what. That's kind of it. The law is actually not really heavy on what needs to go in your minutes. Now, there are a couple of other things, um, schedule of the bills needs to be in there, um, I think at least maybe once a month. Things like that, but by and large, you, you actually, the law doesn't have a lot of requirements for the meat and potatoes of what goes into minutes. Okay, so the reason I bring this up is because sometimes we see boards that really love to say, write that down, I want that to go in the minutes, that I said that. Did you, did you, did you write that down?
Actually, I'll send it to you after the meeting, I'm just gonna type it up.
I'll type it up.
Give it to you and copy and paste it.
And because, because when I write it, it'll actually be a little bit better than what I actually said.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Very well intentioned, um, and we tend to see this probably, it, this happens with, you know, generally speaking, but newer board members who are just, just starting their board service who think this is me being complete and thorough, right? Um, that's actually not how our minutes work because if you were to write everything down, um, verbatim, it would turn into a transcript and oh my gosh, your publication fees would be through the roof. Because you still have to publish it in the paper. Right, so generally speaking, districts will tend to have pretty, pretty sparse, these were, this is what happened at the meeting. Um, but not a lot of the substance. Any questions about that?
And I'm with you, I would never let my board secretary off the hook to not be in a closed session. I'm like, don't make me run the machine, no, make me take, no, 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 no.
I had a great discussion with the prior executive director of IPB, Margaret Johnson, really cool lady. Um, and the new executive director, Erica Ackley, is also very, very neat. Very, both of them have a very thoughtful approach to chapter 21 and chapter 22. But, um, Margaret shared with me, this was years ago, and I thought, oh, this really stuck with me. She said, you know, the, um, digital recordings that you make of your closed sessions are actually really challenging for IPB staff. When someone has, files a complaint about a closed session and then, um, IPB will poll, they'll, they'll say, okay, you know, send us your, send us your minutes, your sealed minutes and send us your recording because IPB has the authority to do that, they get to investigate. Even though it's sealed, they keep it confidential during their investigation process, but they listen to it. She said, God, it's so hard to identify who's talking and heaven forbid if someone sneezes because they have no idea what was said. And so that's why, um, she shared with me that, um, it's so important for them, for IPB to be able to, um, properly investigate a claim. If the detailed minutes of the session, the closed session are, they're, they're pretty substantive, they give a lot of information. That was something that she had shared with me to say, hey, don't, don't be shy about telling districts about this because it really does help us out when we are looking into, um, a complaint. So just an FYI. But again, not that you would ever not have to have in the.
Well, and this, the, the exact same is true on the rare occasion, should you as a board have to go back and listen to a meeting?
Yeah.
It's next to impossible to understand anything and then put three of you or seven of you around the table and you're all like, you're all literally leaning in, listening, try, what, what did they say? Was that, did they say, did they say pop or did they say stop? What, I didn't, and, and if you're needing that for something, uh, yeah, it's tough, so good minutes are important.
So I would love for you guys to take a look at page six and just take a couple of minutes to do the true or false test of knowledge and then we'll talk about them, just breeze through them really quickly mentally on your own and we'll talk about them quick.
Okay, friends, you ready? Question number one, board meeting minutes should be lengthy and highly descriptive for each agenda topic. Our paper at one point in time loved us for how, I'll send you, I'll email, I'll text you. You can just put in exactly what I said. Uh, board agendas must be posted on the district website. Question number two. Where are they supposed to be posted? Beautiful. That was a beautiful place, on the door. Board members cannot add a.
It's a really nice courtesy to your public though to have them on the website. So banner for you if you do it.
Which by the way, when I come visit your district, it's the very first, one of the very first things I go look at because it helps me understand just a whole bunch of things. And when I can find, if I can find them easily, anybody can find them.
Yes.
Uh, so yeah, district website is beautiful.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead. Uh, number three, board members can, cannot add agenda items at the start of the meeting unless an emergency exists. What, what if you really need to get that Palm Coach hired? Because you want camp to start next week and you're not going to meet again for six weeks. Like you really need to get the Palm Coach approved. Still, your true is the correct answer. I already used that with Siobhan earlier. I'm like, here's what happens.
It makes my heart happy. You guys.
Okay. Board secretaries can list a vote as unanimous in a meeting minutes as long as it's clear how each member voted. True or false?
That's true.
It's true. It was beautiful how, by the way, how y'all do the roll call vote as well. That's lovely. There's no question, by the way, everybody votes.
I will say, so that, and that is one of the requirements of your, of your minutes is that the, Joe Key Public, me, I need to be able to look at your minutes and see, I understand how each board member voted on that issue. But if, if it is a unanimous vote, that's fine, that it just says that it was unanimous.
Number five, the last one, boards can physically publish their agendas at the local public library to meet chapter 21's notice requirements. Tell me why. Do you like the, the agenda? Your answer was not wrong. Where did you talk about publishing it or putting it?
Administering building.
Pro- prominent place, right, for your agenda? Um, you could, in addition, I suppose, can you add it at the public library if you really want to, if it's a secondary?
It's a nice courtesy, but I would caution any district against saying that that satisfies the legal requirement because, um, your public's going to be looking for it in districts. Right? And, and this is what we, this is the, the entire intent and purpose of this, to satisfy chapter 21's requirements, is to let your public know the work the board will do. And if they don't know where to look for it, you're not letting them know. That's why.
Closed and exempt?
Nice. Doing great.
Okay. Closed and exempt. Here we go. This is.
One, um, one thing that I will say about, uh, closed sessions, because Kami alluded to this in the beginning. There are 12 reasons by which you can go into a closed session, right? If your topic doesn't nicely fit into one of those 12 reasons, it's probably not appropriate for a closed session. You know, like, oh, but maybe we could just kind of, you know, sort of bend it and twist it and turn it and make it fit into that closed session. Nope, it does or it doesn't. And if you have any question, the number one best resource for you to ask is your school attorney. That is the, the person you should go to. We, we think we need a closed session on this topic, but we're not 100% sure. Can you give us a yes or a no? And they will probably need a little more information and they can be able to advise you appropriately. Right? Um, so always keep that in mind for closed sessions. The other big takeaway that I have from, um, this is from the Iowa Public Information Board from me chatting with their, uh, executive director the other day. She said, make sure when you're talking with, with districts that you remind them that if they, um, are going to discuss matters in litigation with counsel, that their counsel is, is present, either in person or electronically in the closed session. Because that's, that is a requirement to satisfy that portion of the closed session is that the attorney actually be there. And that's for that one, 21.51. So I put that out there because I told Erica I would say it. With that being said, entering into a closed session, you need to give your public advance notice of the possibility that a closed session may occur. And you do that by listing it in your agenda, which you guys did a beautiful job of today. Um, A+, I have no recommended changes for your process. You did a great job. You gave really good specific notice and you actually read the language from the code when you sided to that section of the code, and that was exactly what you should do. Um, and so you handled that beautifully. The other big thing to keep in mind, um, with closed sessions, a couple of things. One is you have to vote to enter into a closed session and that vote needs to be, um, two thirds of your members if everyone is present. And if anybody is absent, if board members are absent, it needs to be a unanimous vote to enter into a closed session. Okay? When you're in closed session, no voting occurs. It's discussion time only. We talk. We don't act. Period. If there's any action that takes, needs, needs to take place from a closed session, it takes place when you reconvene in the open. Okay? Let me make sure I'm covering everything that I wanted to say on this.
Oh.
Mission creep. You want to talk about that?
Well, you're going to go into a closed session tonight a couple times. And so if you have that burning desire to talk about the lacrosse coach and you don't really want to do it at the board table, because we talked about, sometimes those topics are awkward. You just like slip that in and you get, you get the conversa- you're all looking at me like I have three heads. You get the conversation done and then somebody goes, hey, before we leave closed session, can we, I just, a couple things I want to share about the lacrosse coach. Can't do it. And friends, it happens inadvertently sometimes that you get off topic in closed session. Maybe it only happened to me. It's okay. You're human. Somebody then says, Molly's going to say, hey, you guys, I don't, I think we just, I think we just.
Diverted.
Yeah. We, we stepped out, right? Okay, beautiful. Divert back. It's okay. It is okay. It happens when you're doing that. So yeah, you can't just say, hey, let's slip a, let's slip an extra topic in while we're here. No one's going to know the difference. And please, please, please don't ever put your board secretary in the awkward position of saying to herself, okay, do I tell them? Do I just let this happen? It's, you, you are, you are accountable to each other. So if, or if you're in question, then somebody asks, can we talk about this? This feels like we're off. It's okay. Have that conversation.
But to be clear, Molly's the enforcer. She's going to drop the hammer and be like, drawbaw, zip your lip. We're talking about the lacrosse.
No lacrosse coach discussion tonight.
So, yeah, it is important to self-police, um, to make sure that you're staying on topic. And to that end, um, this comes up quite a bit because I'm, we're informally taking you through these questions. Um, your spouse or significant other wants to know what happened in the closed session student expulsion hearing. Just tell me why the board expelled little Larry. It's all over social media. You, you don't have to give me every detail, just the main reasons the board had for making their decision. What would you guys do? This is talking with your spouse or significant other.
And to be clear, it's on the book of face, like everybody knows.
Is that where we say if I tell you, I'd have to kill you?
Yes.
I, I could tell you, but Molly's actually going to walk in there. Yeah, no, very good. You, you, you still have to push back on that. You know what? It's board business. It, it's really nice that your spouse cares and wants to know how everything's going, but nope, this is. The, the only people that absolutely have a full right to be in a closed session are active members of the board. And when I say active, I mean they're currently serving on the board at that time that the closed session is occurring. But everybody else, it's discretionary if they attend. And because it's a closed session, when it's a confidential matter, you, you don't talk about it with anybody that wasn't in that room.
Is it like the FBI though, after five years or something, then I can talk about it?
Not for Student Matters.
I can't ever, 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 15 years later and I still can't talk about it?
Never.
There you go, friends.
That is a very official legal response.
Right.
Never. Okay. A board member approaches the board president. Last night at the baseball game, Mark tripped coming up the bleachers and said, by golly, I ought to sue this district. This step is loose. I think I threw my back out. We need to go into a closed session tonight to discuss our approach to him. I'll make the motion. If you were board president, not that we have any board presidents in here, how would you respond?
I mean, this is like, at, at the meeting or outside of, before the meeting?
Yes. Let's say I ask before the meeting and you give me an answer and I still make the motion during the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, you can't, first of all, 24, it's not even 24 hour advance notice to change that. It can't be brought up. You can't do it regardless.
Is that where you just say denied?
Yeah, exactly.
I'd let you do it.
Let's talk to the superintendent and see, and then make them aware of it and go from there.
Right.
Y'all got these answers, man.
Yep, you're doing great. Exempt meetings, these come up more rarely. I will tell you, um, exempt meetings, here's my, here's my two second spiel about, uh, closed session versus exempt meeting. A closed session is part of your open meeting. It's one, it's one agenda item, or if you have multiple, it's multiple agenda items, right? It's part, it lives within the open meeting. An exempt meeting is something that is totally separate from chapter 21. Has nothing to do with chapter 21. It's not subject to advanced notice requirements. It's not subject to minutes requirements. Okay? And because of that, it's really narrow when you can use it. So here are the two situations where you guys were, will more commonly use it. Is to discuss strategy in, for matters related to collective bargaining. And when I say strategy, that's actually even defined. So we're talking about things like what can the district offer, um, in terms of competitive benefits for the employees when you're about to engage in collective bargaining? That can be an exempt meeting. You know, what, what pool of resources do we have to draw from? What's our, what's our absolute limit of what we could potentially offer? What do we want to be our starting offer? These are, these are discussions that can take place, um, in an exempt meeting for employees that are covered under a collective bargaining agreement. It can also take place for a group of employees that isn't covered under collective bargaining. It's still a group, right? What this, exempt meetings are not used for, and I do get this question from time to time from board members, is, um, the, you know, fourth grade art teacher, uh, really, really just has been super and phenomenal, has taken on so many extra responsibilities and probably just needs, you know, some, some extra support, uh, another, you know, a raise this year. Let's talk about this. That's not appropriate for an exempt meeting. This is specific to strategy related to collective bargaining, the collective bargaining process or your group of employees that are not covered by collective bargaining. Does that make sense? I just want to make that very clearly delineated. There are a couple of other limited circumstances where an exempt meeting might take place and it's, um, teacher termination. And.
No.
I think it's just teacher term, yeah. I don't think we use anything else. So the, it would really just probably be the teacher termination hearing itself would be considered exempt. Okay? And again, with an exempt meeting, you don't have to provide notice. You don't have to take minutes. Um, there could be an advantage to, again, in terms of just communicating transparency with your community to saying, um, and you could put this on your meeting agenda, okay? At the very end, following adjournment of the open meeting, the board will conduct an exempt meeting to discuss matters, you know, of strategy related to, um, the collective bargaining process and you cite to that section of the code. You could actually provide that as an additional bit of information and transparency for your community so that they're just aware. It's a courtesy. It's not a legal requirement. Okay? The one thing, other thing that I will tell you about exempt meetings, they don't belong inside of an open meeting because they're separate. Okay? So you shouldn't have, there's no such thing as an exempt session. There's a closed session. We're talking about that. Exempt meetings, they're just totally separate. Don't put them inside of an open. Does that make sense?
So we don't have to vote on it or anything then? To go to have an exempt meeting?
No.
Done that before.
Put it on our agenda.
Put it on our agenda, so we don't have to, like, we usually, when we have an exempt meeting, we will, at the very beginning, we'll make a motion that we're going to go into for an exempt meeting. It's collective bargaining. We should, we don't have to do that.
You don't have to, so I, I will tell you, parliamentary procedure is just a system of organization. That's all it is. Um, and to that extent, you have a policy, most likely, to 10.7, probably something along those lines, um, that says you're going to use parliamentary procedure when you conduct your meetings. Okay, well, that would include an exempt meeting. So you can use Parley Pro to start the meeting and just, again, it's a nice orderly process for taking one agenda item at a time and making sure you guys are staying on task. It leads to an efficient meeting and that's why we like Parley Pro. So you could still use that at your, at your exempt meeting and it, it's the way you guys conduct business. It's totally fine. Um, and I would say probably the majority of districts do do that in their exempt meetings because they just treat it like, you know, same process as they would for something else. But it's not a legal requirement that you have an agenda for it or that, um, that you take minutes. And, um, when I say it, you could put it on an agenda, like you're going to hold your exempt meeting after tonight because you guys really want to be here until 3:00 AM. Um, you could list that on your agenda, but it has to be following the adjournment of the open meeting. Does that make sense?
But I guess I'm saying that we treat like a closed session in that when we, when we start the meeting, I will say, I need a motion to go into exempt, into an exempt meeting. I don't need to get, ask for that motion you're saying. To even go into, like, you know how the closed session needs either two thirds of the people to say yes or for missing, you know, unanimous. You don't need that for exempt.
You don't because with the closed session, you're starting open and you're choosing to go closed with an exempt meeting.
It's separate.
It's just exempt.
So I would see us listing it, like you said, like tonight's agenda, if it was an exempt session, we put a number 10 exempt session or exempt meeting. And that's just what it would be.
No, it would say adjourn and then underneath it'd be like exempt meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, got it.
You also have in your packet on page nine, uh, a closed session versus exempt meeting, which I always found as a board member to be very helpful. I was so excited about it. One time I said to Siobhan, I'm like, we should have this on our website. Uh, she appreciated that I was all excited about it, but I did not know that's where it lived. So, but I, we put that in your packet as well, just so you have that. Uh, that's one of those, I, if I, if you don't keep anything else, tuck that away somewhere in your board stuff so you can recall that if you need to.
There's more information about closed sessions and, um, exempt meetings that is available in your, your IPeb PowerPoint that you guys all have, um, and that you have access to. And, um, if you ever have any questions, again, this is a perfect opportunity to give myself or Anna a call and just say, hey, just generally, I have a question about, you know, um, this process for a closed session. That's totally fine to ask me. If it's, if it's something really specific, I'm probably going to refer you on to your school attorney. But, um, I can give you that general information. Yep, this would be a pretty common practice of doing XYZ. Okay? Um, I want to make sure that we talk about public records. And here's the deal, the board probably doesn't have quite as much directly interaction with, um, public records in the sense of maintaining them and, um, handling public records requests. But that doesn't absolve you of your, um, responsibilities to ensure that, um, records are being maintained properly and that, um, public records requests are being responded to timely and appropriately. So you guys still need to know, um, at a high level what the requirements are so that you guys can, um, ensure that there, um, any requests that come in are being handled with integrity. Okay? Oh, questions so far? Thoughts?
If it's board members, you were to receive, uh, a request for information, if you were to receive a FOIA, your email, what would you do with that request? That's your standard procedure. Perfect. Just so that you know, just that you, uh, are, have that conversation, yep, I know what I'm doing, that as soon as I see that email coming in, I can't get that out of my inbox fast enough and off to Brian.
What if you were taking a three week long vacation to travel around? What if you were taking a three-week-long vacation to travel around the world in a hot air balloon? And you didn't have access to your emails because you're in a, flipping a hot air balloon for pity's sake, and you didn't see that for three weeks, and then you send it to Brian?
Clearly, this is why you don't go on vacation.
No hot air balloons, stay away from them. They're like green Xs in the ceiling, it's a terrible idea. Thoughts? So, here's the deal. We're all human, and it's almost inevitable, at some point, something will be missed. Right? You do the best you can to make sure that it's responded to timely and appropriately every single time. Okay? But if you were on that three-week vacation and you didn't have access to it, it's okay to forward it to Brian immediately, but also respond back, my apologies, I was out of the country for a period of time. I've sent this on to the appropriate person to, to get a response back to you. Okay? Because, again, we're human. And the purpose and intent of the Iowa Public Information Board, when it was created a little over ten years ago, is actually to provide a more efficient way of handling public records and open meetings complaints. Because previous to that, you had to take something to district court. Well, that's expensive and it's time-consuming. So, IPB was created in about two thousand and twelve specifically to be able to investigate complaints and to be able to have the power to hand out decisions and resolutions to these. And when you talk with IPB, with the folks at IPB, the purpose and intent is really to educate governmental subdivisions, so that if they made a mistake, a good-faith error, then they receive education so that they can try and avoid those errors in the future. Yes, IPB has the authority to do things like assess fines. Okay? And there can be some other violations that can be, that can escalate over time. What they want to do is provide education and training to avoid errors in the future. Right? Because, again, we're human, sometimes we take those hot air balloons. All right. Public records, here's what you need to know. You have someone designated in your district to handle public records requests. Who's designated?
It's me typically.
Yep.
Debbie.
Yep. So, you guys, and you guys work together to, to be able to respond to it.
Whoever else has to be involved, based upon that request.
Perfect. Do you guys know what the process is, board members? Once a request is received? Just off the top of your head, do you know it? Yes or no? Yeah? People who know it, how, would, walk me through it real quick.
Once he gets a request? So, then he, he, well, right now, we have a policy that, I don't remember the exact timing of when he has to respond by and when he has to get it by, but what we do is we take in information, and we let the person know that we're getting the information together. There is a cost associated with it, we have to know what that cost is. You require fifty percent of that cost paid, and then they get the information together, and then when they pick it up, they pay the rest, the remaining amount, depending upon. And that, that cost that we charge is what was considered, you know, reasonable for the district. I don't remember the exact timeframe, I think it's like three weeks, three or four weeks.
Ten to twenty days typically.
Yeah.
So, we're that ballpark.
Okay. So, very nice, gold star. You did a good job, knowing, knowing what the process is. It's important for you guys to be familiar with it. Here are the big things that you need to know. Once a request get, is received by a district, it should be responded to very quickly. And responded to doesn't mean that you hand over everything, because sometimes the requests are really broad, and they take a while to suss out exactly what is it you're looking for, and you might have some interaction back and forth. Okay, you asked for every email in the district that starts with the letter E, that's quite broad. Would you consider narrowing it down and telling me what it is you're actually looking for? Okay, so, those communications will start pretty quickly. And they start quickly because you do have to, you have to be responsive to your public in a timely fashion. And hopefully, members of the public are really receptive to saying, okay, well, really what I'm looking for here is, I was hoping to have access to records from, you know, this week to this week during the past year related to the school's basketball program, or the student activity fund, or something like that. Oh, yep, okay, we're going to work on that for you. So, those communications early to understand what records need to be assessed. And then your staff time, assessing the records to make sure that these are public records, and that there aren't any exemptions to the public records, are the two, the two big areas that you just want to make sure everybody understands what that process is, and that it can take a little bit of time. Because there are seventy-four bases for considering some, a record or a piece of information confidential right now in the Iowa code. I believe it is seventy-four. So, there's a lot for your staff to be able to go through to assess, does, is, is all or a portion of this record confidential? And it needs to, it needs to be separated out or redacted to some degree. Okay? So, that does take a little while in order to do it. Okay? You should be aware of that. The other big thing to know, we talked about reasonable actual costs. Yes, that can be, that can be appropriate to assess. Once in a while, if your school attorney needs to review records that are confidential, you can, in certain circumstances, request that, those costs be paid by the person that's requesting the records. Now, what I will tell you is, more recently, IPB has tightened down on that and said, what that doesn't mean is that you can pay your attorney to make the initial determination of whether or not something's confidential. You need to say, no, here are the ones that we think are confidential, do this more narrow batch. And again, it's just trying to get to what's a cost-effective way of handling this. Okay? So that it isn't too cost prohibitive. Just want to make sure I'm not skipping anything when I'm talking with you guys about this. The last thing I wanted to really touch on with records is unless it falls under something that you, that you would think intuitively is pretty, yeah, we expect confidentiality here. Right? Portions, not all, but certain portions of an employee's personnel file, their social security number. That is not public. Right? That can be considered confidential, we can redact that. And because as a society, we say, yeah, we want that private information to stay private. Right? So, there is a common sense approach to this. Now, the law is pretty clearly outlined in chapter twenty-two point seven of what those seventy-four exemptions are, but this should be kind of a common sense approach. If it relates to a student's, a private student matter, if it relates to a private personnel issue, because there are portions of an employee's personnel file that are public. Right? Their salary, things like that. Then, yeah, we get to keep those, we get to keep those confidential. The other big one that you should just be aware of, because I think this is going to be a bigger issue going forward in the next couple of years, as districts start to figure out what they want to do with regard to arming staff, is your emergency operations plans and your data security response plans, your incident response plans, it should you, you know, ever get, like a ransomware attack. Those are actually exempted as confidential in the Iowa code. And so, th- those wouldn't be turned over as public records. In fact, they're so confidential that you get to go into closed sessions specifically to review those. That is one of the twelve exemptions under twenty-one point five. Question?
An exemption, not closed.
Yes, I'm sorry. I said exemption, and I shouldn't, because an exempt meeting is totally separate. One of the twelve exceptions that allows for a closed session, under twenty-one point five.
So, when you get a request, it is reasonable to go back, if it's a very broad request, to go back and say, would you be, can you give us more information, can you narrow this down? That's okay for us to go back? Because, I mean, I hate to gather all that information, spend all that time, and we really were only looking for a small batch, but I didn't know that.
Not only is it okay, I would say that your staff probably starts there. Just to make sure that they are, they're, they're getting the information that's responsive to the request, but they're not, it's not so huge that it's going to take, you know, a month and a half to respond to it.
We've done that before.
You do.
All the time, depends on what the request is.
Yeah. It really depends on how the request is worded. One other thing, anybody can request something. We have, on a regular basis, a company in Texas that likes to request records from school districts in the state of Iowa. You don't have to be a member of your school district community to request records. That's not a limitation that exists.
Okay. Thinking these last two questions really quickly, can we do that? Because I want you to think about a practical application, so that is, now that you've talked a little bit about Iowa's public records law, how does that impact your communication? So, as board members, whether it's with somebody in your community, whether it's with other board members, or whether it's with your superintendent, whether it's with Brian, just thinking about some of the things that Siobhan just covered, how does that impact your communication?
Whenever I write an email, I just want to make sure that I'm writing it as if the public is going to read it.
Beautiful statement.
Yes.
Same thing with text messages. Same thing with social media. Same thing with really any form of written communication at all.
If you think about how you communicate today as a board member, in your board member capacity, is there anything that you would do differently now, based on what we've just talked about?
We're a little more strict on the consistency of running the meeting.
Think about your, do any of you, who has more than one email address in the room? When you communicate about district matters, how many email addresses are you using? That lesson the hard way, don't think I didn't, and like, I don't want another email address to check. I'll just use my business email. So, you get the FOIA badge. That wasn't fun. Yeah, that stopped. So, I would strongly, strongly encourage you, keep your district email just for that. That makes life much simpler as well. Text messages were already stated, right? That one's really important. I would also...
Is it text messages through, any text message, or is it, it depends on if you have a district phone? How does that work?
It's any text message at all. So, the law really doesn't care what format the record is in, it's the content of the record that will drive how you handle it. What, what, what is the content? So, if you guys are, if you're using a private phone and you guys are texting because you're supposed to have a board meeting next week, and forty minutes before the board meeting, the skies are opening up, and it looks like there's going to be a derecho that will hit, and you guys need to, like, emergency, like, mm, 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 we're not going to, we're not going to hold this meeting. Everybody stay home and stay safe. You can have an immediate group text on that. Nobody's deliberating anything of substance for the meeting. You're just trying to organize that you're not going to be, right? But would that group text mess, text thread potentially be subject to public records?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it's the substance. I mean, you're talking about, oh, God, look at the sky, it's terrible, and it's related to when you're going to hold a board meeting. Your text messages to your spouse? Probably not. Probably.
I would also...
Thinking about a meeting, and I was telling him I had to kill him.
That is a topic for another night. You guys still have stuff to do tonight.
I would also encourage you, if you don't do this today, the bottom of your district email, IASB, we use a blur, a lot of school districts do, that notes, hey, under Iowa code, dot, 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 the information we exchange, it's public record. It is helpful, not so much for your purpose, but when you're replying to that email, it's right there. Right? So, it, it also alerts, if I'm sending you something, and I'm sending a scathing email to you, that it alerts me that once you respond back, oh, I just created my own public record in your inbox. I would also invite you to think about, when you're responding to a community member's message, you could be responding, and they can do whatever they want with your response. So, when you think about responding, so that if it hits the front page of the paper, just even make sure it makes really good sense. So, if you were to receive a question from a citizen that says, tell me about the board's stance on X, if you got really lucky and crafted your email and said, thank you so much for reaching out, I appreciate your question, dot, 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 and you repeated the question and said, the board's stance on is, then should it get copied and pasted and dropped into social media, and you're tagged to say, here's what the board said? You got lucky that time, you had a really, really good response, that you weren't just answering the question. And I share my extremes because that's what I've lived, and that one time, I'm telling you, I got really lucky. Because that, I haven't always done that. So, just that really thoughtfulness, if you're responding to an email, of what does that, no matter what happens to this, am I okay with what I, with what has been said, and will my board members, my peers be okay with what I said?
Any questions, any thoughts? As we wrap up this very long education session. You guys have been fabulous and very thoughtful, and I really appreciate you asking great questions and engaging in this work. It is extremely vital. If you have any questions, including questions about the PowerPoint that we provided, but all the substance of what we discussed tonight, we're available. We would love to talk with you guys further. You have, we're, we're only an email away.
It's also okay to call and say, this happened tonight, what should I have done differently? Or I'm a, I'm, I would call IASB often when I'm prepping for a board meeting. Okay, maybe it was four o'clock on a Monday afternoon, because what else do they have to do? But wait for my phone call for a six o'clock meeting, right? I think X, Y, Z is going to happen, what am I going to do? It's okay. We are, we are happy to, to just, we are happy to be sounding boards as well. Whatever we can do to help you in your role of what you're doing, thank you. Thank you for the work that you do. You know, it's not, it's not always easy. And it's so important. And we're grateful for that.
All right.
Thank you to the two of you, and there's some great points that we can take away, we can do some things different here as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I have a question, please. Thank you for coming. I'm Tim Beck. Do either of you know about the book Reconsideration, meaning that happened last April, twenty twenty-two?
Three minutes. Mr. Beck, this is, again, you cannot ask the question, you didn't make a comment.
Agenda item.
But you can, you can make a comment, but you cannot ask a question to them. Why, why they're not answering it?
They're presenting.
Right?
Is that not correct?
They're not allowed, you're not allowed to ask a question.
I have a question about the material.
So, then you can send an email, and we'll see how we can try and address it then.
Is that correct?
They're going to be leaving now.
Presentation, an agenda item presentation.
An agenda item is for you to make a comment, but it is not for, if you want to ask a question, then you know the route to do that. You can either email your constituents, or you can email the administration. And so, that's exactly what it is. They're the ones who just, they're the ones who just talked about. Would you like to make a comment? Because you'll get three minutes to do that.
I, I, I can't ask your question about...
No, this is, again, you, you, you heard what we talked about. I will ask you one more time, and then I'm going to move on. Do you want to make a comment, you get three minutes. Otherwise, you can email your constituent. All right. We're going to move on, thank you so much. All right. Moving on. Our next is the May monthly financials. Mr. Klingensmith is not here, so Mr. Struch, you're going to do this for us.
So, Mr. Klingensmith and I met, and we went through this together. At this time, as Mike would say, you know, there's nothing out of the ordinary. Everything is moving forward as we would expect at this time. So, unless there's questions, if you have a specific question, you can email him tomorrow. But like I said, at this time going through, there was nothing that was outstanding or of concern.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the May financial report? They look solid, and, I don't know, Brian might be able to find answers, but otherwise, you can email Mr. Klingensmith. If you guys didn't see anything, we could certainly make a motion.
Any report except the monthly financial reports of the May twenty twenty-three as presented.
Okay. Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for May 22, 23 as presented. Provo vote, please.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Toskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Ashley Woldberg.
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move into closed session, so thank you all for coming. Public counsel will stay.
Yes. I'm not leaving.
As you have to. So thank you guys for coming and thanks for the junior high and elementary reports, appreciate it.
Do you want to grab that door back there, please?
I'd like to request a three-minute recess.